Are we starting?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening. I'm now calling the Tuesday, February 21st, 2023 regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to order. The time is 7:02 PM. Please note, we are conducting a hybrid meeting which allows staff and members of the public to attend this meeting via virtual teleconference. The hybrid meeting will be video recorded and posted on the district's website. Because we are video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when commissioners, staff, presenters, and the public will provide comments. If you've called into the meeting and are not using webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comments for the benefit of the recording. Please practice considerate video conference etiquette by muting your line when you're not speaking and limiting distracted behavior on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you're prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Spring.
Here.
Vice President Sherlock.
Here.
Commissioner Basiji.
Here.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yeah.
I see her. Can't hear her, though.
So the.
Unable to hear. Hold on.
Corey. This is. Does this make a statement first, Aaron, about?
Sure, this is Deputy County Council, Aaron Forbath. Commissioner Tonka is going to request to participate remotely under AB 2449 due to emergency circumstances. So I think the appropriate procedures are to do a roll call of the commissioners present in person and then have that request be considered as the first item before the board. And I'm happy to give an overview of that once we get there.
All right, so I will pass that for now. Commissioner Tyson. Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Thank you. And we have five commissioners present. For the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a presenters, consultants, and staff roll call. Santa Clara County Fire Department Deputy Chief Lolli.
Good evening here.
Thank you. Santa Clara County Weed Abatement Manager Kumray.
I'm here.
Thank you. Strategic Planning Consultant Scott. Thank you. She's here for the people who can't hear. Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council, HFR Project Manager Armstrong.
I'm here.
Thank you. Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council, HFR Project Coordinator Ballet.
I'm here.
Thank you. Fire and Loretta Engineering Consultant Tarantino.
Present.
Thank you. Community Education and Risk Reduction Manager Gluhem.
Present.
Emergency Services Manager Bebe.
Present.
Programs Planning and Grants Manager Rendler.
Present.
Technical Analyst/Project Manager Cronin. He's present. Oh, I can say for the record that you're present. Budget Manager Morey Ali.
Present.
Events Coordinator Fire Right Coach Klein.
Here.
Thank you. General Manager Logan.
Present.
County Deputy County Council Forbath.
Present.
Okay, presenters, consults, and staff are accounted for.
Thank you, District Clerk Vargas. We'll now move on to item two, my remarks. But before we do that, do we want to tackle the legal aspects which are fairly new of how we handle these hybrid meetings? So any advice we could take would be welcomed.
Yes, thank you, President Spring and Commissioner. This evening, I was, Commissioner Tonka and I had a conversation. And due to an unexpected decline in her health right before the meeting, she called and asked how to proceed. And I encouraged her to attend by hybrid, then reached out to Deputy County Council Forbath. And we worked out that arrangement. So I've documented that information, sent it to Commissioner Tonka, just confirm the information. And I'll now turn it over to Deputy County Council Forbath to talk about what the proceeding is for the exceptions of a commissioner not attending in person but attending by hybrid and then asking for the consent of the commission for that to occur. So with that, I'll ask Aaron Forbath to comment.
Sure, so like President Spring said, this is all brand new under the AB 2449 post-COVID Brown Act rules which allow legislative bodies to have members appear remotely under emergency circumstances if there is a quorum present in person and the meeting is set up for hybrid participation by members of the public, which this meeting is. The only limitations are that the board make its approval by a majority vote and that the member appearing remotely disclose if there are any individuals over the age of 18 present with them in person. So with that, I think I can turn it over to Corey for a roll call vote, unless Commissioner Tonka has anything to add.
Yeah, I do not have anybody over 18 present at this time.
All right, so then I will take a roll call for Commissioner Tonka.
Here.
Okay, and so the new commission roll call is.
We're sorry, I meant a roll call. A vote, prove it. Correct, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
This is all new. Okay, so commissioners, then we're going to take a roll call to approve having to be to attend by hybrid. Commissioner Spring.
Yes.
And President Spring, sorry. Vice President Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Basiji.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren. Okay, great. And that is four out of the four that are present currently commissioners.
Thank you, and we're all learning something new tonight, so I'm glad this worked out and very glad you could be with us. Commissioner Tonka, it's great to see you in front of me here.
Thanks, Roger.
Okay, let's see. First, for some quick remarks, I'd like to announce that as a courtesy any members of the public having objections to the proposed abatement of hazardous weed brush and/or rubbish on their property, which is coming up later in the evening, but we're also giving you an extra opportunity to discuss our situation ahead of time with Santa Clara County Weed Abatement Manager Mo Kumray in a separate breakout room before providing public testimony at Agenda Item 7. Are there any members of the public present, either real or virtually, or in person or virtually, who'd like to speak privately with Mr. Kumray before providing comment during the public hearing?
Yes, I would.
Oh, great.
Yeah, my name is Edie Styles. It says William Norman, but I'm at my employer's place of business.
Okay.
I'm a property owner in Los Altos Hills and received the notice.
Great, well, before, since we're going to give you a chance, it's coming up, so you can talk publicly at Agenda Item 7, but it might help if Corey, are we going to, how are we going to get her connected to Mo to talk to him in advance?
Yes, yeah, so we can, I'm sorry, your name again was Edie?
Edie, EDI, Styles.
Styles, okay. We can create a breakout room for you and are we Santa Clara County Weed Abatement Manager Mo Kumray to speak privately before, oh, yes, Eugenia, go ahead.
I got it.
You'll take care of it, Eugenia?
Yes.
Thank you. So yeah, our employee Eugenia Rendler can contact you about getting into a breakout room with Mo to speak.
And just to be clear, Edie, you'll have, you'll also have an opportunity to speak to us publicly at Item 7. So this is hopefully an extra chance to work things out earlier. Great, thank you. Okay. Let's see, now, the, that's not the fun part of this. On behalf of the commission, I'm very pleased to welcome a special guest tonight. Supervisor Joe Semidion, District 5, County of Santa Clara, who joins us tonight for special recognition of former commissioner? Do I have to say former now? That pains me to say that. Former Commissioner Melvin Vaughn and also to administer the oath of office to newly appointed Commissioner Toby McDonald. First, a few words of introduction. And by the way, I've been lucky to be in a number of events with Supervisor Semidion. I never saw this kind of biography, and I'm even more intimidated than I ever have been to know all these things. Supervisor Semidion served on the Palo Alto School Board and the Palo Alto City Council from '92 to '96, the Board of Supervisors from '97 to 2000, the California State Assembly from 2000 to 2004, the California State Senate from 2004 to 2012, and back elected to the Board of Supervisors in 2012, reelected in 2016, and 2020. And we wish it would be in 2024, but we know that's not legally possible, so very sorry about that. Perhaps not as widely known, Supervisor Semidion served as a representative of the President of the United States for the 1994 U.S. Delegation to Observe Elections in El Salvador, election supervisor in 1997 and '98 Bosnian elections, seconded by the U.S. Department of State, serving with the Organization for Security and Cooperation Europe, and as a volunteer for the International Rescue Committee in 1999, refugee relief and resettlement efforts in Albania and Kosovo. Joe received his Bachelor of Arts degree with, from the Colorado College and holds a Master of Arts degree in International Policy Studies from Stanford, a master in city planning from UC Berkeley, and a law degree from UC Berkeley. I wonder what you do on big game days. I'm not sure how that works. But first, Joe, welcome and thank you for being here tonight, these presentations. This is really an important night for us, and your being here really makes that stand out. Item three is this item on the agenda for those following along, which is the administration of the, I see, are we going to start with the, oh, Melvin Vaughn, so I'm going to let you take it over.
With your permission, Mr. Chair, I think I'd like to ask Toby McDonald come down and take the oath of office so that you have a full compliment on hand.
Great.
And thank you for the very generous introduction, although as I listened, I thought, sounds like a guy who can't hold a job, frankly, so. But in the meantime, let's get your new commissioner well and truly sworn. And let me ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Toby McDonald.
I, Toby McDonald.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
Will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I am about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, you are now duly sworn and by the authority vested in me under the charter of the County of Santa Clara. It is my pleasure to say congratulations and thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. And I have signed the oath. I will hand it over to the rest of the team. There's a little more paperwork, but I think we are good to go. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members. Now that you have a more complete compliment, I wonder if I could just take a minute to recognize your outgoing commissioner, please. And for those who are unaware, excuse me, of the somewhat obscure process by which commissioners make their way to the dis. In fact, it falls on the fifth district supervisor, that would be me, to nominate individuals to this seven-member body and then persuade all five members of the Board of Supervisors to cast an approving vote. It has been a, an interesting and intriguing challenge over these last now 10 years that I've been back on the board. Because what we look to achieve in making these appointments is to give you a Board of Commissioners that has the right set of skills taken as a whole. And so every one of you was appointed and subsequently approved because in some way, shape, or form, you brought something to the endeavor that kept this community a little bit safer. So thank you for that. That's certainly true of your newest commissioner, Toby McDonald, and it is certainly true of your outgoing commissioner, Mel Vaughn. When Mel applied some years ago, gosh, eight plus now, some years ago, I must tell you, there were actually some mixed reactions in the community. And the reason for that was that people weren't sure what they thought about having somebody with professional firefighting experience on the Board of Commissioners. And I said, well, really, I would think that was the perfect compliment to the range of skills that people brought, the range of experiences that people brought to their service on this Board of Commissioners. And what I want to do is say thank you to Mel for proving me right. Because every one of you brings some set of skills and experiences that make this a stronger body. Some of you have backgrounds in public safety. Some of you have tech skills, some of you don't. Some of you have deep roots in the community. Some of you have financial and business experience. Everybody brings something different. Somebody might ask, well, what else could you want? And the answer eight years ago was, wouldn't it be wonderful if we had somebody who actually had the boots-on-the-ground experience of having been in the world of firefighting for literally 30 years? And that's Mel. What it means is that whenever there were hard decisions to be made, he could lean in and bring a real-life, real-world set of recollections and experiences to the conversation that made him unique in his contribution to the body, in my view. So because it's the county, we do, of course, have an official resolution. Because it's the county, we do, of course, have many wheresses and therefore be it resolves. But if I could ask former Commissioner Mel Vaughn to step up for a quick presentation. Mel, what it really says is, thank you. More than words can say, whatever the debate in our town, our region, or our nation may be about the proper role of government, all of us can agree that the first role of government is to keep the public safe. And when you could have, and perhaps some might argue should have, been comfortable to sit back and put your feet up, you said, no, I want to give it another eight years of contributing in a different way. And you have done that, and your community is a safer place as a result. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you.
I will refer to the chair as to whether or not you get a chance to say a word now at your own farewell.
Well, I'm going to say something first as well, so I'm, before I let Melvin speak, if I could. But I'll come to there, because I think that's where the little thing is. I'm assuming this is. On behalf of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, of which you are a former member, again, that's so hard to say. You know, when I came onboard a number of years ago, I had the least knowledge of anybody on what was going on here, and you had by far the most. So to me, this represents really the end of an era to have you not with us. And I've been really fortunate to do a number of subcommittees with you where, and it was so much fun because I got to tell you, Melvin and I got together, it was like, let's figure this thing out, let's get something done, let's don't waste time, let's make decisions and make things happen. And I think that really has permeated the way we work, and you leave that in the way we work as you leave. And so I just had a great time working with you. And on behalf of the district, we have a small token of appreciation for all the years you've put in with us, and thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone. I really had a great time. It's been 10 years and it's been a ride. I was telling Toby today, we go way back from the fire service. He came from Palo Alto and I came from OPIUS. And I was telling him, it's one of the most organized and professional organizations I've ever attended. And just the big diverse background of the business owners and tech people. And it's just been great, and it's been an honor to serve this community, and I continue to do so. So if you guys need a hand on anything, let me know, and I look forward to seeing you guys around town. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here. Thank everyone for being here. Welcome to our new commissioner at the dais. So welcome here. And we will now continue with the rest of our evening. Okay, let me get to the. Okay, that will be the, let's see, public comment, I believe, is our next item. Someone will correct me if I'm wrong on that. Persons wishing to address the commission on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Please note, however, the commission is not able to undertake extended discussion or action tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker unless the number of speakers requires the commission president to impose shorter time limits. Do we have any public comments on items not on the agenda?
And I don't see any hands raised.
Your hearing none. Great. We will now move on to item six, the consent calendar and changes to the order of the agenda. Are there any comments from staff on item six and the consent calendar? Seeing any, are there any questions from the commission on these items? Or any commissioners like to make changes to the consent calendar or the order of the agenda? I will now entertain a motion. Will the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding the motion, please state their names for the benefit of the recording?
Sherlock moves to approve.
Warren seconds.
I believe I have to respectfully lose myself from, I was not here until last.
Okay. Let's see, let's see. Items now open discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Okay, are there any public comments on these items from the consent calendar?
Yes, we have a comment from Alan Epstein.
Great, okay. Alan, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you very much. I would just like to make a comment on fix D. I noticed that there's a agreement to extend the services with fetcher agreement with regards to the annual CAFR, excuse me, annual act for report. That's, that's fine with me. They did an excellent job on the current version. I noticed within that, though, that there is a option to pay additional amounts if the district decides it wishes to obtain GFOA or California Society of Municipal Finance Officers awards. And there's an additional charge of $3,000 each year, $3,000 if it wishes to perform that function. My recommendation is that the district not attempt to obtain those awards. These are basically beauty contest type of awards, and they do not increase the accuracy or materially increase the transparency of the district's financial information. And as many of you know, I've done this for 15 years on the Finance Investment Committee at the town of Los Altos Hills, so I'm familiar with which I'm speaking. So I'm all in favor of the signing up fetcher agreement again, but do not believe the additional $3,000 is a good expense. And just to mention that the $3,000 is like the tip of the iceberg because that's only what they charge to review what the district needs to do in order to comply. So there's substantial additional costs involved with the district complying. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any other comments or discussion from the public? I guess not. If there's no further discussion, we will vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Okay. President Spring.
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Basiji.
Yes.
And Commissioner McDonald. Do you want to recuse?
Okay, you may actually just, you may vote to approve and recuse yourself from, for example, any items that you don't feel comfortable voting for. For example, if you don't want the draft minutes of last meeting, if you want to approve the other items but recuse yourself for item A, that's acceptable as well, too.
I would recuse myself from the last month's minutes, but I would approve.
Okay, so just for the record, that Commissioner McDonald recuses himself from item 6A, but approves the other items. Thank you. Right. Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
And Commissioner Warren.
Yeah.
All right, and the motion passes 6 to 0 with one abstaining on item 6A only.
Thank you, and we will now move on to item seven, the public hearing, which is the public hearing on the proposed abatement of hazardous weeds, brush, and/or rubbish. District Clerk Vargas, can you please introduce the item?
Thank you. Item 7A is a public hearing on the proposed abatement of hazardous weeds, brush, and/or rubbish. At the January 17th, 2023 regular commission meeting, the hearing was continued to tonight's meeting due to the change of meeting location and travel restrictions due to the inclement weather that we had in January. Residents on the noncompliant property list were mailed a courtesy letter, which is included in the agenda packet, to notify, to notify them of the date change. Weed Abatement Manager Mo Kumray, could you please provide the commission in public with a brief overview of the abatement process?
Hold on as we try to get him connected.
It would appear that Weed Abatement Manager Mo Kumray is no longer on the call. And he's, he just hopped on, okay, just be patient with us for a moment. Mo, when you have reconnected, if you would please.
I'm back.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. Could you, could you provide just a brief overview of the abatement process for the commission before we open the hearing?
Well, any property that's on the list that we provided has been found to be noncompliant at least once in the last three years. Once a property comes onto the program, we have to, of course, go through this approval process for the list of properties. It's an opportunity for property owners to come in and contest their inclusion. And then we will proceed to do the inspections and, if necessary, abatements on the properties and come back to another hearing in July or early August where we will approve fees to be assessed against the properties. Properties that are on the program stay on the program until they have three consecutive years of voluntary compliance or build-in landscapes sufficient to remove the risk of fire on the property. In the case of what we have tonight, we had one party that I spoke with prior to the meeting who had parcel number 18206018 on your list. They had some confusion because of the notices they received from the fire department about the defensible space, which differs from the weed abatement, and confusing dates. So we've agreed that we'll inspect the property, assuming you approve it, we'll inspect the property. If it complies, we'll take them off the program at no, no cost to the property owner. The party that we had in the breakout room just had some questions about how the program works and what they needed to do regarding the dates. I answered those questions, and that party left satisfied, I believe, with, with what we had to say. So that's all I have for that.
Okay, great. I think I still need to, I will open the public hearing, so to be officially to do that. So I will open the public hearing, and the time is 7:30 PM. Please note, if any members of the public would like to contest the inclusion of their name or parcel number in Exhibit A of Resolution Number 23-01 of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to proceed with the abatement of weeds, brush, and/or rubbish, now is the time to do so. Any and all persons interested, having any objections to said list or to any manner contained, any matter contained therein, may appear and be heard. Are there any comments from the public? I'm looking to see if we have any, none present, any.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any, any hands raised.
I think that's fine. So I guess in that case, I will close the public hearing. And Mr. Kumray, do you have any changes to Resolution 23-01, Exhibit A?
No.
Great. In that case, thank you. And the public hearing is now closed, and the time is 7:31 PM. Let's see, item 7B is the resolution itself, 23-01. Are there any clarifying questions from the commissions? Hearing none.
I have a, actually, a learning question that I want to propose to Mr. Kumray. I just was wondering, there's a certain number of people are on this list. Does it, does the list vary in the, over the years? In other words, those 25, 57 people that are on the list, do they change from year to year or they come in at a certain point and exit at a certain point three years later, all in the same manner?
It's, it can be different people year to year. When a property comes on, it stays on for three consecutive years or until built-in landscaped. But some people don't comply, and if they don't comply, the clock starts over. So they, there are people who've been on this list for more than 10 years.
Thank you very much for the clarifying comments. Thank you.
Mr. Warren?
I got a question, a tangential question, Manager Kumray. This fall, we lost Phil, who ran Farmer's Son Tractor Service. He was a resource. Many of us in the hills. He was a resource many of us in the hills relied on to be in compliance. So we didn't wind up on the list. Do you have a list of resources for community members who, who provide those services? Because you know, hopefully, I don't know what's going to happen with that company now that Phil is no longer with us.
Right, we do have a list of companies that do abatement work on our website.
Okay.
So let's say search, anyone who searches on Google on weed abatement Santa Clara County will get to that site. And there's a list of service providers in the area.
Thank you. Great. Any other questions? Okay, are there any public comments on this item? Assuming none. Okay, if there's no further discussion, we will now vote on the resolution. District clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spring.
Actually, did I get a motion in a second on this? I'm sorry.
You know, I don't think we did a motion or you didn't do that yet. So yeah.
Yeah, I need a, a motion.
Warren moves.
I see you second.
Or somewhere. Great. We have a motion in a second. Need other discussion? Hearing none. You may now conduct the roll call.
Thank you. Okay, so President Spring.
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Basici.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
And Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Kumray, will you be leaving us, I assume, for the rest of the?
Yes, I actually have another hearing to attend.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate your being here.
Okay, bye.
We'll move on to item eight, the fire chief report. Item eight A is the monthly report for January 2023. Deputy Fire Chief Lolly, could you please provide this report for us?
As affirmed, good evening, members of the commission supervisory committee and members of the public. I'm here on behalf of Fire Chief Gerga. My name is Dennis Lally. I'm a deputy chief with Santa Clara County Fire. And here's your monthly report for the month of January. We had no significant incidents to report during the month of January. Call volume remained average, including with all of the storms that we had, we didn't see a significant rise in call volume here for the Almonte Fire Station. We had one incident with dollar loss, which was a vehicle fire on freeway 280 that had a dollar loss of $2,500. That is the end of the report.
Great, thank you. Any comments for the chief? Any questions? Okay, any public comments or questions for the chief? No hands raised? Okay, great. Thank you very much. We will now move on to item nine, the general manager report.
Yes, thank you, board president Spring, commissioners and public. Corey, can you put up the general manager report? There we go. Okay, if you will take a look at slide two of the, the report, this pertains to the wooey and unincorporated letters now being distributed to residents in Los Altos Hills County Fire District. Notification of the unincorporated letters were received today for the high and moderate fire severity zone. There were 207 of those letters that will be sent out and that has the requirement for 30 feet of defensible space requirement between the structures and the vegetation. In the very high fire hazard severity zone, 38 letters are requiring 100 feet of defensible space structures. Those two letters were added to the letters that you see up in the general manager report. The general manager report references Los Altos Hills Town Wooey letters, and these are high to moderate fire zone requiring 30 feet of defensible space from structures. Of those letters, 2,552 will go out within the next week. Included in the materials is a flyer with webinars for wildfire preparedness will be sent with the letters to the residents. Slide six. There we go. One more. Back one. There you go. Okay, one more back. Yep, is slide six is ADA digital inclusion IT project description. Russ Morale headed up this project along with the next slide seven, which is a website upgrade migration. And then slide eight is a schedule for LAFCO countywide fires review study. And slide nine is an overview of procurement of a Ford 250 truck and a transit van for work performed and emergency transport in the district. The various evacuation route projects, events and moving of emergency trailers require a district vehicle. The truck was budgeted in 2020, 21, and again in 23 with, but was not purchased. Now with assistance from county fire fleet purchasing, the hope is to purchase a truck to replace the prior district vehicle, which was a Ford SUV. And then slide 10 through 12 takes us three through the recent hydrant strikes and the cost of repairs. I'll respond to questions and then move on to the emergency to the engineering report on the Almonte Black Mountain hydrant strike. So that's the end of my report. Any questions from the commission?
Any questions? Mic phone on, yes. Is it not lighting up? Okay, so borrow his.
I was just wondering, is every property in Los Altos district considered wee, wee property?
No, no, it's, it's certain specifications and it's a good percentage of the properties, but not all.
Okay, well, thank you. I was just wondering whether mine was or not. Thank you.
Sure. That's why we get the numbers of letters that are being sent out.
Is the, are the letters individualized with that QR code that's on their, their property already?
That's my understanding. Okay, yes. They're individualized.
Any questions here? Please.
I have a quick question. When, when a vehicle strikes one of the hydrants, does that driver, that car, does their insurance company cover the repair costs or do we have to cover that?
Oh, that's my favorite question. Thank you for raising that. We have a very robust risk management claims group here in the district that's, that's handled internally. And so so far, and you know, you hate to say the hundred percent mark, but we've been able to reclaim every dollar that has been expended on the repairs. And the reason for that is because usually vehicles don't go very far after they strike one of these hydrants. And either that or someone is, is available who has taken the license plate number. And we've got a very observant population. So so far, we've not had any, you know, missing vehicles. They, they usually are at the scene. And the sheriff takes a report. We collect all the damages. Generally, the damages are the cost of the repair of the hydrant, which you see. And then to that, we have engineers go out and look at how best to replace the hydrant. And I'm always concerned if I see a hydrant re-strike because from my perspective, hydrants are dangerous. They can be negligent from the district's perspective. So I want to make sure that the commission and I understand what caused that hydrant to be, be hit. And that kind of leads to the next item on the agenda. But I hope that's responsive to your question. But we do serve damaged claims to the insurance company. And I will say probably the least claim I've seen is a couple for $3,300. The highest hydrant claim was over six figures, over $100,000.
Okay, thank you. Just curious.
That's because of all the intended damage that came from the, the water.
Yes.
Coming from that.
Yes, the water. Yes.
Thank you. Any public comments on the general manager report?
Yes, we have a question from Alan Epstein.
Okay, Alan?
Yes, thank you very much. My question is with regards to the improved website. I was very pleased to hear about the improved website. But as you know, I've been asking for a couple of years now about what can be done to improve the search feature on the website. I tried some search, searches today and I did not observe any differences in terms of the quality of responses that were returned. So I'm just curious as to what is the priority for improving the search fear, search feature on the website. My second question is just, where is the district going to park the truck and the van since it doesn't have a facility? Thank you very much.
Yeah. Do you mean to respond very quickly? Yeah, so the search feature on the website is definitely an issue. It is one of those things that we're trying to look at, but we had some priorities that needed to take place, mainly getting the IT operations going, as you recall. And then the ADA digital inclusion, very important and upgrades. So Russ Morale, who's our budget manager and also an IT expert and whiz, will be looking into the, the search features, but that's going to take a major overhaul to do that. Just quickly to say that. And then the parking of the truck definitely and the van definitely issues. I've reached out to a couple of different agencies, Foothill College being one. And I'll reach out to the town and we do have to come up with some ideas there or else they, they go with, with the employee to their home.
Great.
Yeah, but that's definitely an issue.
Good questions. Thank you.
Very good questions. Thank you.
Any other questions in the public? Seeing none. Okay. I guess we can see, move on to the next part of the report about the strikes, the strike on Altamont.
Yes, I didn't know if Jeff Tarantino is on the call. I don't have visibility as to who's on.
Yes. Hi Jay, this is Jeff. I'm.
Hi Jeff. Hey, listen, the last time that Jeff, that we had the report to the commissioners, they were very interested in hearing about the strike on Altamont and Black Mountain. And I know that you did a report that's included in the agenda package. And I wondered if you could go through that with us just to help us understand what happens oftentimes from an engineering perspective on a hydrant strike and then what we can do to better protect our hydrants, if anything at all, and still make them compatible with the use that they're intended for and that has functionality to the fire department. So we don't in any way impede on the fire department's use of, of the hydrant. So with that, can I ask you to present your report? Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Jay. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to attend, to attend the meeting tonight and, and talk you through in particular the hydrant strike at Altamont and Black Mountain. So, you know, Jay in her previous item had talked about, you know, hydrant strikes and being a great concern, especially those hydrants that are struck multiple times. And the Altamont and Black, Black Mountain Road is, is an example of, of one of those hydrants that has been struck multiple times. So since frying the red began working with the district in the spring of 2020, this is the second time the Altamont and Black Mountain Road location has occurred, has, had a, had a strike incident. The first incident in, apologies, I'm referring to that report here. The first incident in January of 2021, that hydrant strike and included in our report that's part of the agenda packet, attachment number one is, attachment A, excuse me, is a copy of our strike incident report and shows some photos of both the, essentially the geyser of water that occurred at the time of the strike. And what our engineers did was after being notified by Prisma Hills Water District of the hydrant strike, they provided us with a photo of, of the incident. We observed the condition of the hydrant itself, of what was left in place. So there is a, what's called a, a breakoff check valve. So it's essentially a, a part of the fire hydrant assembly that the way it's intended to work is if the hydrant is struck and fully removed from the, from the, the body of the check valve, that there's essentially an iron rod in there that, that will, that is holding down and the hydrant's in place, holding down a plastic valve, a plastic part of the body of the valve that then is intended to basically flip up and prevent water from coming out from the pipe. And what we determined at the, during the January 2021 strike was that due to the age of the, of the check valve that it essentially, you know, reached the end of its useful life, the, the plastic over the years had deformed and it didn't properly seat. And essentially that's what allowed the, 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 the geyser of water to, to occur. So the repair at that time was to essentially remove and replace the entire body of that check valve. So we had a brand new check valve. So the brand new check valve and the hydrant were in place with the most recent strike this, this last month. And we again had a leakage. But what our engineers determine in discussions with Firstman Hills Water District was the second strike, the truck was probably not moving as fast and it essentially ran over and partially dislodged the hydrant. So again, this check valve without the hydrant being fully removed from the body of the, of the check valve and allowing that rod to basically be fully removed and allow the flapper valve to come up. It had essentially partially dislodged the hydrant. And so the, the valve wasn't allowed to fully, fully place and, and seal the, 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 the pipe. So once Prisma Hills and the, and the sheriff are on site, the truck was moved, the hydrant was fully dislodged and then the, the flapper valve basically fully seated. In kind of observing the conditions, we, we determined that the check valve did function properly once the hydrant was completely dislodged. And what the, the, what the repair was this time was to simply replace the, the breakoff spool that gets bolted on top of the check valve and put the hydrant back in place. So, you know, once we realized this was a, a second strike at this location, our engineers had already started to form kind of a plan of, you know, what can we do to better protect that check valve or, excuse me, that hydrant? And so included as attachment C to our report is an initial plan. Excuse me, it's figure one to our report is an initial plan to add two additional bollards to, to the, to, to protect that hydrant. We developed this as an initial plan based on the Prisma Hill standard detail for providing fire hydrant protection, which is a, a, a detail that was developed in collaboration with the fire district. And then we will, you know, upon commission's direction, we will meet with county fire to confirm and probably do a site visit to, to lay out exactly how the baller would be out there. And then once approved by county fire, we can then proceed with having, utilizing our on-call contractor to install those bollards. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any comments from anyone here? I have a couple, couple of questions. One is, do we know in both of these strikes, were these people driving along the road or were these people trying to park? Cause it's really a parking area that kind of is close to the road. Were these people just managed to drive off the road at full road speeds and hit this thing? Or were they just maneuvering around the parking lot and backed into the thing?
It's inattention.
Okay.
Distra, inattention driving and they were trucks.
Okay.
So they weren't small cars.
And the second question was, and I, just looking at the, the report, I was trying to figure out where the bollards would go. It looks like there's going to be three bollards at the conclusion of this, but it didn't look like it completely surround. And I, I just couldn't fully tell the orientation of everything, whether those bollards are completely surround the hydrant well enough that from any direction of a truck coming in that same way, they would hit a bollard first. And is, and is it oriented such that the firefighters are having problems getting their hoses on to it?
I think that that's what is going to happen next is to have the fire department, some staff and engineering go out and really, you know, take a look on the site and determine if it's feasible, how many bollards. And, you know, test the engineering perspective and then see if, if it's workable.
Is this, is four bollards, you know, safer? Cause I pictured a box around the thing, you know, four corners. I don't know what standard. I'm sure this is. These are naive questions I recognize. I'm not, I'm not looking to design this myself.
Sure, I'll defer that to Jeff Tarantino.
And second is. And a related question is. Related question is. Is there any, is it infeasible to move it? I don't know which, which directions the pipes are coming to get it just out of, as opposed to just protecting this thing. Is there 10 to 15 feet of moving it, you know, farther away for safety?
Yeah. So in terms of kind of a standard arrangement of the bollards, you know, three, four, six, whatever, you know. There's not really a standard. We try to, you know, develop a solution that's kind of specific to the location. You know, my field staff felt three would be a good starting point for review with fire, with county fire. You know, the dimensioning that we show in figure one generally should provide sufficient access to, to the, to the, to the hydrant for the firefighters. But again, that's, that's something that we want to go out there with a tape measure and put some stakes in the ground and, and, and make sure that county fire agrees. You know, the orientation is a little, I agree, is a little kind of hard to. Um, you know, the orientation is a little, I agree, is a little kind of hard to tell. We didn't, we didn't have a survey, so we couldn't show it in relation to the road and some other site features out there. Um, but generally the, the idea is to orient these bollards so that it could prevent, uh, a, a vehicle coming off the road and striking it. I think the challenge is because it's a parking area and it's a little bit of a, um, uh, to use a non-tacable term, a little bit of a cowboy area in terms of the way people park out there that, you know, trying to orient it in a manner, um, to provide the maximum amount of protection to reduce the risk from damage, um, is, is our goal here without obstructing access to the, to the hydrant itself. So, um, I think if, in, in viewing in the field with the county fire, if we can find a way to add a fourth bollard there without obstructing access, I think we would, uh, definitely be, uh, a proponent of that approach. Uh, but again, um, want to make sure that it's still, still accessible. Uh, and then your second question about relocating it, um, we didn't look in a, in a lot of detail at that, um, Commissioner Spring. Um, we can look at that, but I, as I understand it, that, that area of road is, you know, kind of a lot of open space that, that kind of has the same risk, maybe trying to separate it from the parking areas, maybe, maybe some benefit. Um, but that would be something that we would have to, um, look into further and we can.
I'd, I'd like to, to propose that we just.
Okay, Jay.
Go for it. Oh, I'd like to propose that we just come back to you with a plan, you know, once we get more information.
Right. Yeah, I think that's a good, thanks for asking those questions. I keep thinking that's such a vulnerable spot. No wonder it gets hit, you know, and trucks don't see low bollards. I mean, it's, and people are driving a lot of trucks these days, so it might be either it has to be more visible or the bollards need to be higher or something that identifies it. But it's also, why do we have it in a place where people are parking all the time? And it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So if we can come back with a plan of what it costs to move it, it might make more sense than constantly trying to protect it. So I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other pu- uh, public comments on this item? Seeing none? Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, thank you, Consultant Tarantino, and thank you, Jay. We will now move on to item 11, Report of Development of Successive, Successor Strategic Plan. Uh, let's see, uh, I think Strategic Planning Consultant Scott will introduce his report for us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, President Spring. Good evening commissioners and staff and all the folks on the call. And, uh, welcome also to Commissioner McDonald. We get to start tonight with a big picture view, um, of what the district does. And let me just, um, make a couple of comments to help you navigate the packet. And then, um, the ad hoc subcommittee has a slide presentation. So while Cory pulls up the slides, there, uh, this item has three components. First is the slides are in the packet with the information, kind of the, the story of how all this came together and all the work of the ad hoc subcommittee. Second is the draft strategic plan. Um, and then the third is a recommendation. If the strategic plan is adopted tonight, the ad hoc committee can be retired, um, and have time off for good behavior. And, and, um, just one quick comment. It, thank you for the input. President Spring had a comment on a clarification in, um, of the four strategic goals. The third one is about infrastructure. We were just talking about infrastructure. Part of that is the hydrant system, but also with regard to a district owned parcel, there is an item in the strategic plan about, uh, creating a timeline upon which to consider what to do with that parcel. We can add an additional comment of, uh, planning the highest use of the district parcel to support ongoing administration programs and prevention tasks. I think that provides a little bit of clarity of, of what some of the previous thinking has been about that parcel and help, um, guide us as we think about what to do for that. And, um, so after tonight, we can take any other comments and edits and put it all together in a flip book format, which will be on the website, which is similar to the strategic plan that is already on, um, from the past two years. So with those, um, comments and the last comment, sorry, I had one another is, um, we plan to come back to the commission twice a year, um, probably around July, August, and then in February every year to give a report on the progress of the strategic plan. And at that time, the commission could decide if there need to be any modifications. Um, and it can be a living document in that way and adapt with us as we progress. So I will turn it over to Mark Warren, Commissioner Warren, to provide, uh, an overview of the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. So hopefully this is my last time speaking on this topic. So as a reminder, um, this subcommittee consisted of myself and Commissioner Basigi and, uh, Vice President Sherlock. And then we also had the sta- uh, staff support throughout this project, uh, to get us to this point. Next slide, Cory. All right. So as we know, the strategic plan is one of the three key elements in, uh, you know, grading, um, documents for the district. Uh, we've got the strategic plan, which sets the, the direction in which we are, uh, moving. Um, we have our annual budget, how we allocate the actual financial resources that we have. And then our CWP be the, um, um, community welfare protection plan, which is what we use to guide our programs and projects to actually, you know, based on fire science, you know, what projects we implement, where we do them and their urgency and the nature of them. So this is a, um, you know, three-legged stool. This is one of the legs of the stool, strategic plan. And this is our third strategic plan. There was one that was done in, um, 2015. Then there was, um, a re- two-year refresh done in two, uh, 2020. And this is the third one. Um, and, um, as Consultant Scott said, that the idea is, is this is going to be a living document. You were, we're taking a, um, several year outlook into the future, but it's very hard to know what the world's going to look like in four years, let alone in two. So the idea is, is that this is our, this is our North Star, our guiding document. But the idea is, is that we live in a dynamic environment and as such, we will want to revisit this on a regular basis to make sure that we are moving in the right direction and we, if we need to make adjustments, we can, hopefully for some other wonderful subcommittee. All right. So part of, you know, we've got the three key documents that we use, but we also have an important document called the Charter of Services. And there's an example here in the slide. Um, and this is, I think, really an important document and it's, you know, this is the, what version of this are we on? The, the 50th, 13th official version? This, this gets updated on a regular basis, but this is an important document because this is a manifestation in one place of all the services that the, the district is now providing. And this is dynamic, but I think it's a really good reference for, to understand what the staff is doing on a regular basis and all the things it is that the district is doing for the community. So this is an important document, um, to, not only for the strategic plan, what we're going to add to this as part of the strategic plan, but also as a guide for when people ask you about the district, what does the district do? What is its roles and missions? This is a great document, a great reference point. And so what I want to say is, is that, um, you know, part of this is really important. Part of this is, is that it's the district programs and also shows all the partners we work with. Um, everyone, uh, from Foothill College, uh, Palo Alto Fire, um, even, you know, green waste disposal, who, you know, does our pickup at Foothill College. So in Town of Los Alamos. So, uh, that's an important part of the entire, um, you know, package of services delivered. So back to the strategic plan itself. So when we're, next slide, there we go. So when we get it done, um, it's good, it'll be posted as one of our governing documents, um, under strategic plan, under governance tab, then the strategic plan link. So once we get this done, that'll be, um, posted there. Um, are we also planning on making hard copies? Okay. That'll be good to have. All right. Next slide. All right. That's where it'll be. All right. So back to how the sausage gets made. So the strategic plan, um, we held a total of six meetings, um, including a community meeting. We talked about that last, um, time we were here, uh, but to summarize, um, you, we, um, and the feedback that we got from the community, uh, continuing our community outreach and education, including our new newsletter, um, what we also learned from the community is, is that the direct action programs, I like to call them, things like the chipping program were, are really well received by the community. That is where we actually come to the residences and provide an actual service that benefits them and the community by removing fuel loading from the property. That the firewise community is now taking hold and people are getting engaged with that, learning how to be proactive and make their neighborhoods, their, their more localized neighborhoods, more fire resilient and safer and getting to know their neighbors in the process. And then such things as the new teen cert program where we expanded what was already a pretty robust cert program from, um, you know, compared to a lot of other towns to now include teenage members. And we had, um, you know, um, great, uh, interest by teenagers in that program. We've added that. It's, seems to have grown. We've added, um, chapters at several high schools. And so, you know, that is an expanding set of services that we're offering and well received by the, um, community. Uh, so thank you, um, Victoria, for getting that, making that happen, you know, some of the feedback we learned. So this was actually a really fun project to be on, I thought, because it allowed us to engage directly with the community, hear what people want, people, what they're interested in, what their misconceptions are, uh, misunderstandings, help educate the community on what the fire district does and what our mission and charter are. So, um, what we learned, um, some of the other things we learned in the last couple of years as we went through this is, um, few lessons learned that the staff continues to improve our operational knowledge, um, and the projects that we're working on. Um, and you'll see later, you'll see some of the complexity of the projects that we're now taking on. Um, and I think that that, that can't be, you know, stressed enough. You know, my short, you know, several years on the commission, the complexity of what we're doing, the challenges that we're doing is, is all based on the staff we have, the ability to manage these complex challenges that require coordination, uh, with county, multiple agencies, partners, contractors, uh, regulatory aspects, legal aspects. The, this couldn't happen now without the staff that we now have. And that's one of the reasons we want to continue to, um, you know, make that a priority in the strategic plan moving forward. All right. So next slide. All right. So here's the plan. So what I want to, um, just a high level summary, um, that we've got a five-year plan here, as we said. Uh, we include the four strategic goals and 18 initiatives that we went over last, um, meeting, but to find a, kind of summarize, um, which focus on our four, um, goals and initiatives, focus on the district's mission of community safety and preparedness, strengthening community resilience and our regional partnerships. And so, um, what I'd like to do at this point is next slide. Okay. Uh, before we move further, I've been yammering on, um, Commissioner Basigi, you want to add any comments? You want to hear, here's a hot mic.
I apologize for this, uh, switching back and forth. Uh, the, the comments I like to make are largely personal. I think, uh, first and foremost, I really deepen my training by participating in this and I'm learning from the, uh, far more experienced co-commissioners and also from Marcy and other staff members and Jay and so forth. And the second thing is as a homeowner, I really learned what is, what the, what the, what the, the LA, uh, layer CFT does for homeowners. I'm a resident of the lower pavement road and which is one of the hardened roads for the, for evacuation. And, uh, as a result of really participating and deepening my own knowledge, my wife and I dabbled down on, uh, on our, our HIC hardening effort. And we are by, by far, we have two or three times more, uh, effort going into the, uh, removing trees and adding, removing grass and putting gravel instead and so forth. The third is the, I'm a mem- I'm a member of the, uh, the, uh, newly constituted, uh, emergency preparedness, uh, committee of the town. And I, by participating, I learn how much we can cross leverage our, our effort in the, uh, in the district and also the town to try to make a town a lot more, um, more imperious to, to wildfire. And I'm going to try to do that. And the last but not the least is participating in the, um, in a public meeting. As, as, uh, Commissioner pointed out, we learned a lot about the, uh, community outage program and hardening effort that we give, uh, wood chipping and so forth. And, um, and I, I hope that we continue really in, in reinforcing the effort that's already underway multifold hopefully. So those are the, uh, my comments. I'm passing on.
Thank you. Vice President Sherlock.
Thank you. Yes. Um, first of all, it was great participating in the community. I mean, in the committee, um, I had a lot of fun, Mark. So, um, appreciate your leadership there. The, um, I think metrics are always our challenge and we're going to have to go back and look at, I don't know if we should dissolve the ad hoc committee now or we should just say that staff's maybe going to come back with ideas on the metrics. But I think for every single goal we put in there, we really do have to have some solid numbers in there so we know if we've achieved our plan or not. You know, we deal with this a lot over in the marketing communications area. And I know that we're going to hear from, from staff tonight on some of the numbers that we've achieved over the last year. And even in that area, it's always a challenge to measure. And I think that, you know, if you ever want to, um, be able to show somebody what we've accomplished, you have to show how numbers have progressed or something is truly measurable and, and that we've reached what our goals were or exceeded our goals. So that's one area I'm going to look at a little more carefully. But otherwise, um, I think we've got a great plan moving forward and I'm glad we didn't do it just for one or two years. I'm glad we expanded it a little bit this time. So you won't have to lead a committee again in the next couple of years.
All right. Thank you. Um, so what we'd like to do here is, um, we'd like to recommend adopting the strategic plan with edits, meaning, and what I mean by that is, is that this evening, we've got a feedback from President, um, Spreen. If there's anyone else on the commission who would like to provide edits to the strategic plan, I, uh, think we have an opportunity to, to hear them and, uh, incorporate those. And then I'd like to recommend that we, um, approve the, uh, adopting the strategic plan with edits this evening. And, and then adopt the plan of coming back twice a year with an update. And as part of that is a report on metrics, include that in that twice year update. When we've got four goals, what are the metrics and how did we do against those metrics? Make sense? Okay. I know. Thank you guys for, uh, sitting through this with me.
Great. Thank you very much for all, all three of you. Um, let's see, is there any, uh, any discussion from this item given that you, you, for most of the people here at the DAS? Um, and I got, I submitted my comments earlier. Any comments? Okay.
Quick thank you to Marcy there. Much appreciated.
Any public comments? Uh, but we're going to come, we're going to come back. The next item is voting on this. So let's just finish off the discussion of the presentation of this. Is there any public comment on this presentation? I'm seeing no, or.
Yeah, there is.
Alan.
I'm sorry. My computer has died, so.
Great. Alan, you've got the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, uh, I want to compliment the, the team, um, and Marcy for the effort they put, put into this, developing this strategic plan. I think it's a, a great outline of, of what the district, uh, needs to do. However, I, I would like to reinforce, um, Vice President Sherlock's comments about measurements, um, and goals and, um, uh, uh, metrics, because I think it's very important. And, um, it would be nice if some overarching goals and objectives could be incorporated into the strategic plan before the committee, uh, signs off on it. You really can't demonstrate accomplishments without having a benchmark against wish to measure those. And there really aren't any included in, in this document. There, there are aspirational goals, but there are no specific metric sort of goals. And I think that's a shortcoming. And you'll hear that comment again when we get down to the budget conversation. Whereas some might say that, well, a strategic plan should be more aspirational and directional. That certainly isn't the case with regards to a budget. And our budget certainly with regards to the task that the, the fire district staff is responsible for does not have very good, um, detailed, specific goals, objectives and, and metrics. So thanks again for the excellent job, but please try to, um, enhance and improve the portion with regards to metrics and measurements. Thanks again.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I, I would, uh, I don't know if now is the time to sort of continue that discussion or later when we talk about, uh, sunsetting committees. I would assume if we want to go down the route of applying some more specific goals, it would tend to be on the ones that we're currently focusing on. It wouldn't be necessarily here's numbers for everything for four years. But, you know, in our current focus over the next six months, given that we're, we're revising. It wouldn't be necessarily here's numbers for everything for four years, but you know, in our current focus over the next six months, given that we're, we're revisiting things every six months. We might want to say, you know, in our current six months focus is in these areas, why don't we put some numbers now so we can revisit them in those, in that time.
Right.
Do you have a proposal on how we might get those?
Well, I don't think it's uncommon when you do planning to set your goals and then you build your strategies from that and the tactical things. And once you built the tactics, you can see what the numbers actually are that you'll try to achieve. So I think it's cool to look at those six months. Hence, and have those numbers, have it really drilled down a little bit. I don't know that we have to do that now.
Okay, perfect. Good.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
Yeah, I'd like to ask you, when we get into the IHFR reports, because all those project reports do have a series of measurements and metrics at the end. And let us know if we're hitting the mark that your thinking needs to be done. We're starting to develop the whole idea of impacts right now. And when we look at impacts, we're looking at fiscal impacts, strategic plan impacts, and then we'll also include the CWPP annex four. And we've just redesigned the staff memo report to have those sections in the staff memo report. So the idea is that every time a report comes to you, you'll have the recommendation, the background, the discussion, and then you'll have the impact section. And I think in doing that kind of project by project, we'll start developing the collection of these measurements and these metrics that then will flow into the semi annual or the annual report. So that's kind of what staff has developed or created right now. We're in the, in the mind sharing thinking process of doing that. But the test is going to come, I think, when you look at the IHFR reports and say, yeah, that's what we're looking for as a commission. That's the way we want to affirm what is going on and the expenditures of funds and, and all the resources that are going out the door to do a project. So that's kind of where we're developing right now.
Great. Thank you. Well, no further discussion. Oh, please.
Maybe what we can do is say six months from now, when we do revisit, we do look at each goal with a metric assigned. And I think that's an idea. I mean, if it's possible. Yeah. Okay.
Good. Great. Thank you. We will move on to 11B, which is approving this successor strategic plan. I don't do with, with the various edits have been discussed. I don't know if I, do I, Marcy, do I need to introduce you again to discuss this? I don't know if we really need to have any more discussions from you. So thank you. Are there any other clarifying questions from the commissioners in terms of, before we move on to a motion to approve this as the successor strategic plan, the district? Seeing, hearing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the 2023 to 2027 successor strategic plan. I will second. We'll definitely get him on the record book tonight. Will the commissioner make the motion? The commissioner seconding the motion, please state their names for the benefit of the recording. I'm going to allow the president of the, the subcommittee to make the motion.
Warren moves.
And we have a.
McDonald seconds.
There we go. Okay. Excellent. Is there any?
I just wanted to make sure that the, the, the motion includes the, the next six months evaluation of the metrics.
Great. Sounds great.
Agreed. My motion includes the six month updates with metrics.
So we'll get that on the agenda six months from now to make sure we revisit that. Any other discussion in the commission? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Great. Let's see. In that case, we will now vote. District clerk Vargas, please connect the roll call.
President Spreen?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Basiji? Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great. Thank you so much. And we'll now move on to item 11C, which I think at least three members of this dais will be very happy to see, which is approving the recommendation to sunset the ad hoc commission successor strategic plan subcommittee. Nice long name there. Let's see. I don't think we really need any discussion from that. Basically this says that the, the duties of that committee have been more than well met. And I'd personally like to say that I'm so impressed at how this was, was done. And I can't say enough about the enthusiasm and energy, because that's, you know, some, in some ways, this is the homework assignment you don't want to do, but you know, you have to. And the end result is so important for us. And clearly you see how it's going to guide us over the next four years. So my thanks to the three of you. I would certainly, however, entertain a motion to, because admin ad hoc committees are meant to be temporary when their duties are done, the committees end. So I will entertain a motion.
I moved that to be subset the sunset the ad hoc committee.
Commissioner Basiji?
Sherlock seconds.
Sherlock seconds. Great. Thank you. Any discussion about that? No one wants to fight that? No one wants, you know, continue?
Thank you for the kind words.
Okay. Seeing no argument, any public discussion on this? You want to, want to make these guys continue working? Okay. Thank you. In that case, let's conduct the roll call.
All right. President Spreen?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Basiji?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you so much, everybody. Okay. Well, now move on to item 12A, which is receiving the final report on the Rastodaro Road evacuation project. See, General Manager Logan, I guess you'll be providing this report along with.
Just a few remarks. Thank you, President Spreen. The report on item 12, our annual and semi annual updates, the commission for the integrated hazardous fuel reduction projects aimed at proactive fire prevention by removing hazardous fire fuels and also informing the community about district services and how residents can participate in the fuel reductions on their property to reduce the risk of wildfire. To frame up the presentation, Denise Gluen has comments and Denise, as you know, is a retired fire captain who can frame up these reports. Denise is often called on as the district's visionary as to where and when the project should be planned and the extent of those projects. And Denise has been with us about three and a half, four years now. And I think her perspective would be really helpful. So Denise, could you please provide your insights and comments? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, General Manager Logan, for the kind words and good evening, Commissioners, Supervisor, Committee and Staff, Consultants, vendors and presenters and members of the public. And again, thank you for this opportunity to share the following agenda item, item number 12. This includes various reports that highlight and detail information on various projects, programs, including certain firewise support systems and planning and grant updates that have occurred recently in the district. And as it's been shown in many of the previous agenda items this evening, some of these items are, are, you know, completed here this evening that we've been looking through. These reports are in alignment with the district's mission statement and the strategic planning goals, and they showcase the efforts of the district. And those items that are represented in that last item for approval, when we're looking at our strategic planning, we have a living planning document. We're going to revisit that in six months. And that's where I'd like to have you envision these types of reports being something that occurs in that metric and that measurement that you're looking for. These items can also be found integrated into the chart of services that we saw earlier in the presentation of the last item. So I'd like to personally thank staff, consultants and vendors for all their hard work, their professional service with the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. It's really been a growth curve to see the productiveness and the increase in that productiveness with the addition of details and nuances that we weren't able to provide at the skeleton staff that we were just a couple of years ago. So I really want to tell everyone how much I appreciate their input, their professionalism, their skillsets that they bring to this. And we have to remember the end goal is preparing the residents and the community of Los Altos Hills to be more resilient in the event of emergency. So with that, talking about emergencies and the possibility of those, I'd like to invite another retired captain from Santa Clara County Fire, Ryan Cronin, to present the first item report on Rastodaro Road evacuation route. So Ryan, if I can give it over to you, thank you.
Thank you, Captain Gluen. President Spreen, Vice President Sherlock, commissioners, you're welcome. A quick review of the Rastodaro evacuation route hardening project, because not everyone has seen it before. Maybe members of the committee or, or commission and, in the public. So the Rastodaro Road, Rastodaro Road hazardous fuel reduction for the evacuation route. This was a Rastodaro Road from Page Mill over to Old Adobe Road. It was right, right along the northern edge of the district. It included the park and ride, the Caltrans park and ride over at Page Mill. It is an evacuation route hardening project, meaning it's designed to provide an alternative or a safe egress for citizens trying to evacuate in the event of a disaster or fire, as well as allow ingress for emergency vehicles and services into the area. It's accomplished by removing hazardous fuels. So that could be dead, dying, diseased, damaged and a new one for this deranged trees. So those are trees that are growing into themselves. So those are trees that, you know, heavy fuel load, they're not healthy. And so we remove the trees and the limbs. We also remove any ladder fuels that propagate the fire from just a, maybe a easily controlled or fast moving low BTU ground fire into something more significant. And then we also rehabilitate some of the habitat that's there. So as we take some of this, this fuel out, we're disrupting some habitat. So some of that gets replaced and we maintain that healthy habitat. Next one, please. Almost. There you go. Okay. So talking of those metrics, a busy slide, but we can go through that. We use seven working days to accomplish this. It did cover over a weekend and we did have one rain out day. You'll notice there's a couple of variances in there. Wednesday is kind of unique. We didn't get very far down the road, but that was the day we did the park and ride lot. So we were in one area with a lot of, lot of heavy work going on. You'll see that we, we chipped in places best we could. We hauled away that, that we needed mainly those diseased things. And then we did leave some product on the ground so that we, we established that some, retained some of that habitat. We went 3.5 miles of road edge or easement side. So it was a little over a mile and three quarters or so of actual roadway, but there's two sides of the road. So we progressed up one side, turn around, came down the other. Through that, if you look at the totals, 194 cubic yards of vegetation. I talked earlier in other, other previous meetings, we also discovered an inordinate amount of trash. That's the inorganic fuel. It's not just unsightly and, and pollution, but it is a fuel source and mainly hydrocarbons. And so that too needed to be removed. You put that in there and we're well over 200 cubic yards of fuel. To put it in perspective, if we can see the next slide. What does that mean? What does that look like? Those are 40 yard dumpsters. And we had more than just over five of those. And so those are the roll offs that come on a full on semi truck. You know, they're 22 feet long, they're eight feet tall, seven feet, eight inches wide. You know, they take up the whole lane when they're coming down the roadway. Five of those things got filled up. If you account for the organic and organic fuels that were removed. All right. Let's look at another metrics. We'll see the next slide. So here's the area that we treated. Acres is the traditional measurement used within the fire service. Wildland fires and prevention activities are measured in this sort of, in acres, either acres burned or acres treated. If you think virtually all fires start small, old lady Leary's cow knocked over a small lantern. And there went Chicago, right? It could be a spark coming from a chain of trailer down the roadway. Other than, you know, something usually manmade, or maybe even a false lightning strike on a tree and now the entire tree is ignited. That's a pretty good ignition. But most fires start really small. So when we look at the area treated here, all right, we have, you know, a total of eight, eight point five, eight point seven six acres of treated area. That's a very small fire. So is it, is it important? That eight point seven acres is that ignition area. All of that, eight point seven six acres is no longer a potential, a high ignition potential. It's right on the side of the road. You know, a spark, discarded cigarette. So for every day, for every vehicle that passes by, we've eliminated that opportunity for an ignition in eight point seven six acres. Prevention, my firefighter buddies don't like hearing this, but prevention saves more lives and suppression. But it's hard to measure because how do you measure the fires that don't happen? Okay. So with that eight point seven six acres, we, every day, every opportunity of ignition, we've eliminated, eliminated an untold number of fires. This project, I feel, was, was very, was done in a timely method, or we got it done within the timeframe we expected. We got it within the line item budget. We were very foreseeing to get it done before those January rains and winds. And we also got it done for tonight's wind event on purpose. So. All right. Let's take a look at what we did. Let's see the next slide. Oh, I missed them. So graphically, to give you an idea of those acres, I think the guys were getting, getting in their, their step. There's that third day. You know, again, it was a small, small focus on that, that park and ride lot. And then as we progressed to different areas, the last day we were moving along a thin roadway and really covering a lot of ground. It was kind of the north side along the fence line onto 280. So we covered a lot of ground that day. All right. Now let's take a look at some of our progress. All right. So this eucalyptus grove on the left hand side, lots of bark hanging on the trees, a lot of ladder fuels available there, a lot of litter on the ground. And then there you see it after treatment. Nice clean side of the roadway, not likely to cause a fire. If it is, it's going to be a small smoldering fire, easily detected and put out. Next one, similar corner there. If it comes to the next slide, just thinking about it, lots of graphics. So it takes a while to load. All right. So that's that same street. There's, that's the same streak. That's that street coming down from the right hand side by those trash cans. Look at that corner. You can barely even find the stop sign in the middle of that. There's a dead tree in the middle there. If you come down that roadway and you're trying to look up to the right of Altamont, cars are coming down the hill at you. It's virtually a blind corner. Then you look after treatment, the dead tree is gone. You can see the stop sign. You have a clear view up the roadway. So not just is it a fire improvement, it's just a life safety improvement there. All right. Continuing on then, there's a, there's a walkway there. Look at that shade, that dark cove on the left hand side, not very inviting. Opened it up, feels much safer. There's no place for someone to hide in there. It's increased visibility. That really is a good testament to the life safety, not just fire safety there. This is a narrowing portion close to the parcel, goes over a little bridge there. We had dead and dying trees right up against the bridge area. So nowhere to maneuver around that. So we've cleared that out, really reduce, made it safer for vehicles to, to traverse through there. And along the Parisima Water District property, now you can see that they're actually there. We did not take down the telephone tree. Hiding in the mix there. We did take out the dead one that a tree fell on the Bay Bridge today. How is a tree fall on the Bay Bridge? Well, that tree was going to fall on highway 280 up top. That's another story. All right. And the last slide. So on the left, that's an egress. That tree had fallen over. That is a residential neighborhood up behind the park and ride lot. Once that was cleared out, that secondary egress for that neighborhood is now open. And they can get down into the, you know, down through the park and ride lot and be able to evacuate the area. And with that, in my report, there, there, all of this is contained within the written report that you have, although with other details. Provide that.
Any comments or questions or statements from commissioners other than wow? Commissioner Basiji?
I, I guess I have the privilege of traversing through that role almost daily, perhaps some days twice or three, two or three times. And I am constantly amazed, I hope, how, how much nicer it is now versus three months ago when you did this. A second question, you, you made a point of saying that firefighters have a saying. Hey, an ounce of suppression is better than tough. Could you repeat that so I can write it down? I can repeat it to others?
Well, my comment was actually that, that prevention saves more lives than suppression. So, yeah. And please don't put my name to it.
Yeah, I heard it was that they don't like to admit it. So please don't quote him on that.
He does. They're, prevention certainly young song. prevention certainly young song heroes or.
The comments? A question, just only because I, and this is a weird naive question because I know you know, the ever increasing rate that you were able to clean up, and that may just be structural from the, the root. But do you find that on that the crews themselves learn during the project such that they're getting better at the end of the week? I mean, does this say that we should be doing longer projects that take advantage of a learning process? Again, it was that graph that made me think of that question.
No, I think a, a good portion of that, on the second day, I believe, we lost the chipper. It broke down and then it came back into service. So then we did see more production later on. They, they're certainly very qualified and they know what, they know what they're doing. There is a bit of learning at the beginning of, what is, what are we doing in this project? And, you know, it's, it's not just the, the usual, okay, we're, today we're taking out trees or whatever. It's, it was very specific work. So I think there was a little bit of a learning curve with that, but I don't know that there's really an answer behind that progression, but it is observable and it's worth the question to.
I, I have a quick comment. That's it. The, what, what you did also made the road so much safer for bicyclists and for the fire engines driving down that road because it's parts of it were like a tunnel. And you're getting pushed over the WL line in some areas. So working on an emergency scene or just driving or, you know, all around it, made it safe for everybody, you know, even without a fire.
Yeah. And our cyclists are going to get to ride it with the district in May. So.
Yep. Just amazing pictures. And what a difference. So these are, these are the kind of projects that can make everyone feel proud when they see that kind of work being done. And I hope they give the district credit because that kind of stuff is just not getting done. And now this is our, what, third project, you know, they're, of, of doing this sort of thing with more in the pipeline. So my thanks to Denise really for creating this prod, you know, this system and rolling it with, along with Ryan. So these are, these are amazing projects. Thank you.
President, can I just real quick? It's actually our fourth project.
I couldn't tell us third or fourth, right?
Page was the first. And then also a, a component that Ryan brought up. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the activity guide, our bicycle adventure in May is, is highlighting there along with a lot of the other programs the district's doing. And we did have a new vendor. You asked about curb. It is really important that we have optimum equipment and personnel. We, we bid the project out at the five person and certain equipment. If any of that goes down, it slows productivity. But this was also a new vendor. We want to deepen the experience level of the vendors. They may do chipping and stuff for us, but to deepen it into evacuation route hardening. So, you know, having that, that depth in multiple vendors. So this was a new vendor and it's good to get the experience out there so that we have multiple vendors bidding on these to keep it competitive. And then again, that weather component, I think that's something, the weather and trash are two things that have come up as we've learned more about these evacuation route hardening back on Moody Almani, we had such a trash problem. This was equally had a large trash problem. So you know, addressing that and the fact that you're getting the benefit of weather, we hope we never have a fire. We hope we never have to use this as an ingress or an egress. But that being said, the benefit of the, of the hardening. So I'm going to, this next item is going to be with Marjorie and she's going to be why go firewise presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Actually, any, any public comment on this question? Did I ask for that on this report from the public? Not hearing any, great, not hearing anything. Okay, great. We will move on to the next report, which is the why go firewise community meeting report. And the firewise USA community booklet. And I think the emergency service manager, BB, are you going to provide this?
I think we're going to start with Marjorie. She's in the hills. So if not, must I just say, sorry, forgot where in Los Angeles. Yeah, she'll, she'll start if I can pick up if I need to.
Hi, yeah, I am on hotspot. So hopefully everything will work fine. Good evening, Commissioner Spreen, Vice President Sherlock, all the commissioners and staff and public. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time tonight. I just wanted to say that we had our first very soft rollout of the Firewise program last month. And on March 4th, we are doing an in-person program at, at the town hall. We also have a, we now have a spot on the website for the Firewise page. And we have our virtual booklet that is on the Firewise site that I believe they're going to open up for you so you can see it. And we'll have the printed booklet in our hands before the fourth event. So here's the page and here's the booklet. And so scrolls rather nicely through. Any questions for me?
Any comments or questions? See Commissioner Warren, looks like you're just gonna say it looks good. Thank you for pulling that together.
I think, yeah, I think the team did a great job. And thank you, Marjorie, for your work on it. It's a really comprehensive document. We haven't actually done something this comprehensive before. So it was a really great job and great teamwork of getting the complete story told so that people can be instructed how to do all the different elements of building a firewise community and why to do it. So thank you for that. I think it's great.
Thank you. Any public comment on that? Seeing none. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Klein. Appreciate it. We'll now move on to item 12C, the CWPP and Annex Four reports. Programs planning and grant manager, Rendler, could you please provide this report?
Good evening, everyone. We have some slides, Corey. Maybe.
She's working on it.
I'll start with a bit of a recap while Corey's bringing our slides up for us. The CWPP, as you know, is a multi-level project that we're involved in. It had, the, the countywide portion of it is being managed by the Santa Clara County Fire Safety Council with two grants. And they're doing the county level update. And they've also just received the county coordinators grant through the, through the California Fire Safety Council. And you have that memo in the package. So this makes it a very dynamic document that they are going to update every six to 12 months. That's what the coordinator grants were for. So the, the countywide document is an overarching document to coordinate the countywide wildfire projects to improve connectivity and the efficacy of those projects. Because we know that wildfire recognizes no borders and no jurisdictions. So our county is, is large and diverse. We've got multiple eco types and various topographies, the inner and outer coastal ranges, lots of land use from urban to agriculture and, and the wui that, you know, many of us live in. And it means that we have various fire agencies and response responsibilities for all these different, you know, varying topographies. And to address this beautiful diversity, we enjoy living in, the original CWPP had 18 annexes to address local needs while still coordinating the regional efforts. So what we see on the left in this slide is what's happening at the county level. They have an advisory team that works with vetting the document. It's, it, the next meeting is on April 4th. And there's about 60 different entities across the county represented on that, that vetting team. Then they're also holding annex holder consultations, just if you want to check in and, and see, they don't, they're not responsible for updating all the annexes. But they're offering an hour to each annex holder. If you just have questions on how you merge with the countywide document. And then there's the information on the coordinator grant again. And it's, the announcement is, the press release is also in your packet. So in our county, there's 18 annexes and Los Altos Hills is Annex Four. So like I just mentioned, the countywide update is managed by the Fire Safety Council and it's not responsible for the 18 annex updates. Each annex holder is responsible for their own update. So on the right hand side of this slide, we talk about what we're doing at the local level, just handling our annex four. There's a template been released for, from the county to help guide the annexes to include, include minimum content. But they're not running our update for us. They're just saying things like, we need to have you all use the same coordinate system when you map. We need to at least have your projects include identifiable features like intersections so that we can put them on a larger map, things like that. So it's time to update ours again. Our last update was in 2019. And a large, infrequent amount of fires have changed what fire science knows about fire behavior. Codes have been changed. If you've been at any of the town meetings last year, you would have heard the debate in the new ADU ordinance that they're looking at is one of the examples of that. The public consciousness has completely changed. And there's a lot more resources concentrated on the wildfire apparel from the federal money and policies all the way down to the local level. So since our districts strives to remain abreast of best practices, the latest technology and fire science results, we've engaged our own consultant, DUDEC Environmental, to analyze the new risk and fire maps, environmental factors such as pathogens and drought impact and ground truth past projects and future recommendations. So armed with all this information from our consultants and our own internal, you know, expert, subject matter experts, we've got wonderful people on the staff as well as our strategic plan goals, which you've just, you know, heard a great deal about. And our budget directives, we, the staff develops and maintains the programs in our charter services, which you also saw earlier today. And IHFR projects that we're putting on the ground in the community. So those are the layers of how we fit together in the overarching county document as well as our own subject matter expertise as consultants and staff. So we remain, we work in our local community while we main collaborative with our regional partners. So I, I hope that that little overview kind of shows this, this has been a slow moving, moving process initially at the county level. And now it's picking up speed. So I hope it is a little bit clear how these parallel paths are, are working. And then the next slide, we'll talk about our upcoming Annex Four constituent meeting. If it will load, there we go. Great. So on March 15th, we are having a meeting for the Los Altos Hills area. And it's going to be a joint meeting. It's going to be the town, county fire and Los Altos Hills County Fire District talking about what we're doing in our local level because those three entities are all, you know, involved in the same land, protecting the same geography. And the town also has an update in its annex, again, talking about the same areas. So that's why we've teamed up together. We're going to, we're going to review the different pieces that you see here in our bullet points that will end up going into our Annex Four updates. So please come and participate and see what we have. We, we're going to have tables and maps and information and surveys to tell us, you know, the kinds of programs that you're interested in and and see what we have rolling out as our next year's worth of projects. That's the other thing that we'll have it at this meeting. The map you see in the background, we'll have an opportunity to interact with on a three by four foot level with, you know, Ryan and Denise and I all talking about what's coming up and how it fits into our, our strategic plan that you just approved. So that's the end of this report.
Great. Thank you very much. Any discussion from the commission or questions? It's like, any public comment on this? Not seeing any. Great. Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Stan just went up.
I was sort of expecting there to be one.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to the upcoming March meeting. I'm curious as to whether the, the district and, and the attendees will be coming with a presentation of what the annex is looking like? Or is this a effort to try to get input from the public as to what they believe the annex should look like? One of the great concerns that residents have had with regards to the prior annex is that the report didn't do a good job of representing the actual conditions on the ground. And we're hopeful that with the LIDAR work that has taken place and the DUDEC expertise involved, that there'll be a much better ground assessment that residents will be able to look at and confirm because of their knowledge, their local knowledge of the area to guide the activities that should take place to, to make it more safe for residents. So if you could just spend a couple more minutes talking about what your expectations are with regards to the residents that attend and what you will be presenting, that, that would be great. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And any comment? Is it?
Well, I, I can speak to a few of those if you want to allow the time or we can, you know, what, whatever the commission's decision is into when to address this.
I was just curious if there's any sort of, I, I have a question about what the expectations are, but I guess the we'll build a presentation, but I guess anyone can come without any, there's no pre-work to be done, just showing up and ready to sort of give their voice as members of the public is what's needed. Is my, my guess?
Yes. And we will be presenting the, the the things that we will be doing next in terms of the program enhancements and the upcoming projects for the next year. And we will be taking input from the residents about what programs work, how they want them delivered, which ones they're, they're participating in and the types of things that they would like to see as well. So there's a strong handshake between the strategic plan goals and the things that we'll be looking at at the annex meeting.
Great, great. Thank you very much. Let's see. I guess we'll have any other comments here? Seeing none. We'll move on to item 12D, which is the Cal OES FEMA Hazard mitigation grant sub application status update. See. Who's giving that? Who's going to present that for us?
I am again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
So you've seen on and off through the past year, whenever there's been anything new, we, we've brought it up. We had one more request for information, an RFI that we completed last month. And I, we found out last week that Cal OES has moved our sub application along to FEMA, but with the recommendation of waitlist listed. So what this means when they explained it in more detail is that they got so many projects this year that there was, they had more strong projects than they had funds available. So if more funds become available in this particular program, FEMA has really boxes drawn around its funds and its program. And so we're in the hazard mitigation grant program. So if that particular program is allocated more funds, then we'll move from the waitlist into consideration. What this effectively means to us is that we're in the queue for additional funds. We weren't denied. And if you're not waitlisted, you start the process over again in the next grant cycle. So this is middle ground. We didn't obviously get moved all the way to FEMA. But we also are still in the queue. So this is, this is good news. We're not having to recreate that grant application again. And, you know, clearly we'll keep you apprised of any new news right away.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then this is, yes, please.
Yeah. So did they show who they did accept? Or who they did give the grants to so far?
So the awards come from FEMA and that happens in the fall. So Cal OES just moves the sub applications and the applications up to FEMA with its recommendations. And they're tasked with making sure all the sequels there, the visual impact assessments are there, the things you've heard us talk about having completed along the way and answering all the RFIs. Then they move it all to FEMA and it starts to over again in, in FEMA scoring system. And FEMA makes its awards in the third, usually the fourth quarter of the year. So we won't know who our competition was, so to speak, until the end of the year.
Okay, great. And do they, are they transparent about where we are on the waitlist or no?
No, they are not.
Okay.
So does being waitlisted mean that, I'm sorry, does that mean that our name is on the waitlist that goes to FEMA? So is, 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 is so, so if things change at FEMA, FEMA can decide and they can shuffle things as well. So if they get more money through infrastructural projects or if they reshuffle things, we're already in their list of things.
Correct. And the other, the other thing that happens is if you get to the point of where they start making awards. And you're missing certain of your criteria, you can get waitlisted and they'll pick up the next person. Who has been sure to meet all the requirements. That's why we've strived to handle all the RF. Um, the request for information as soon as they come in and why we've, we've done the reports that we've done with the visual impact assessment and the secret pre-planning to make sure that as soon as the opportunity is available, we've, we can put our hand up and say we're ready.
Great. Great. Thank you. Okay. Uh, no other comments. We'll move on to, uh, next, next report, which is on the, uh, twenty two, two thousand twenty-two annual and semi-annual program summary reports, the grants program.
Right. So I just wanna, here I am again. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to call to your attention that we're now changing gears. We just finished our monthly reports. And so now we're changing gears to our annual and semi-annual program summary reports. So these is based on the 2022 calendar year. So for example, in my, in my grant activities report, you're not going to hear how we got moved under the waitlist because we're looking at the calendar year. So we're just switching gears a little bit there so that you've got these annual summaries. Um, but they do end December 22nd on all of our upcoming program summary reports. So uh, I think we're one slide too far. Corey, could you go back one? It's says grants, it says grants program at the top. There you go. Thank you. So this, in 2022, we began our, um, district grants program. And this is a summary of the purpose, the strategies and the management plan, which you have seen before. So it's a recap. And the reason I recapped it for you was to tie into the strategies outlined in strategic goal one. And supporting the program funding. So these were what was developed on and how to satisfy that and you know, tar- how many grants we were going to target and look at, et cetera. So this is our overall, um, what we do with our program. And then the next slide. Is what we've done for the past year. There we go. Thank you. There's our calendar year. So the primary grant that we worked with so much, of course, was the Cal OES FEMA Hazard mitigation grant. And there's a little bit of summary of all the different activities. That it took to put that together all the way back from January's. You know, first notice of interest to tell them, yes, we're interested in applying for the program. All the way through the RFI process and hiring, uh, the vendors to produce our CQ analysis and the visual impact. And we continued the monitoring all the way up to here we are. Then the next thing that we did was the new grant submissions were evaluated for the district. They were, we looked at project design, competitive scoring criteria in the grant cycle and also the grant application requirements. This resulted in, um, a few applications that we, um, weren't eligible for based on things like need or regionalism. A lot of the grants tend to want these large landscapes, these large landscape, uh, style projects. Which is why our regionalism is so important to start collaborating with folks because these are, these are bigger projects that usually get the grants. But we are building for the future, um, the participation in all the grant training sessions that I went to for the different entities. Through the state that give grant money really give a much better idea of what our grant part, uh, pro- our grant program should target. So the 2023, 2024 grant cycle, there should be more things that, um, we're ready to step into. And then finally, we supported a lot of our regional partners with background, helping them do project design, collaborating on grant application and language. And the important content that would help them produce more favorable applications. And how to execute the kind of data that the grant applications ask for. So we, um, supported multiple partners in our regional area. And that is the end of my annual report.
Thank you. Any comments? Any, oh, customer procedure? He'll give him the mic there.
I have a question in regard to our regional partners, there, there be asked, uh, or we did be volunteered to help them. And if they were, we were asked on what basis did they thought that we could help them?
So, um, several of them were inquiries and the the asks were, um, a lot to do with my background in the grants that, and things that I've looked at and managed in my decade over with fire safety council. So county fire, um, uh, the county planning department, um, hidden villa, they're all familiar with my background and my collaboration through projects and designing grant management and grant application writing.
That says we are very fortunate to have you on board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Not seeing any. Okay. We'll move on to, uh, the next item, which is the community outreach and education program, starting with social media. And this will be emergency services manager BB providing this report.
Thank you so much. Um, good evening, commissioners, uh, public and staff. Um, I get the fun part of this end of the year summary, um, at least my, in my view. Um, so I want to talk to you a little bit, just quickly give you a background. Um, we have a very small staff communications group. Um, that staff works, um, sometimes late into the night overnight to get information out to the public. Um, we take our, our little group, uh, pretty seriously. So, um, a lot of our community outreach programs do, um, obviously require us to some social media. Just want to kind of get, give you a summary of, of the hard work we've done here. So we've done about 500 posts across all our social media networks. Um, that's a combination, as you can see in the pictures here of event, safety tips. Um, our cert programs, um, just to kind of really engage people. Um, we've had three, thirty-five, um, thousand impressions, which is a number of times an L I D, uh, social media post has appeared on someone's screen. That's pretty impressive. I was really shocked at these numbers and actually really happy. Um, 12,000 people viewed, uh, our posts and then, um, we had some engagement. Um, you know, I think talking about our strategic goals and looking at what we can do as our communications team to really, um, you know, set some parameters, what we want to do too, is sort of what our yearly planning, um, has looked like. Um, we have taken our county OEM social media toolkits. Create a resilience calendar that has probably come to your, um, your residents. If you saw that, it came out, um, I think a couple of days ago is when you guys got it. Yeah. Um, and we're taking each of those weeks and doing safety tips. Those safety tips go out on social media. Um, they also go to the, um, the town city manager report. Um, and we also have been really branching out and reaching out to our allied partners to, um, amplify their messaging as well. So, um, and ours. So I'm really happy to, uh, to report that. I don't know if my thing, well, here we go. We're going to talk about some analytics. Um, I, I really want to thank, um, Commissioner, well, Vice President Sherlock. Sorry. It's been a long night. Um, for her help, she, um, we have our little small communication staff and then we go to a larger, um, communications team. And we get a lot of feedback in that team from, um, Jay Logan. We'll pull in, um, you know, different staff members. And, uh, uh, Vice President Sherlock is there weekly, um, to meet us and give us, uh, time to look at, um, you know, how we're engaging residents. We really rely on a lot of feedback. So I just want to say thank you for that. Um, it's, it's super helpful for us. Um, here's some pictures of what our website looks like. We did do some, um, analytics. So, um, we, as you can see, I'll let you guys read that, but I really want to kind of highlight our top 10, uh, pages viewed. Okay. Obviously the home screen. Is what it is. Um, but as you can see, this is what people are clicking on. Um, we know that brush chipping is, is, you know, quite, um, a, a big push for our programs. Um, and then, um, you know, as you can see, there's other things that they're, they're looking for. So we're going to, we're going to take these analytics and as part of our small comms team, we're going to be looking at these and how we can, um, further um, get some more traction onto our website and through our social media. I think that's all we had for this one. I am done into this report for this one.
Great. Any questions, comments?
Can I make a quick comment?
Please.
Good job. I mean, what incredible numbers. What a difference. I think that in the communications group, we're always trying to figure out when there's no emergency, nobody pays attention, right? So we're always trying to find reasons for them to pay attention and, and you've done it. You know, it's, that's incredible.
Yeah, it's really nice to, uh, to coordinate with our, um, I think I talked about this a lot, my support, the joint information center that we have up at Cal, uh, or, um, sorry, too many acronyms, um, our OEM office for the county. They have really helped on pushing out their toolkits. That goes out to everyone's, you know, allied agencies. It's been really nice collaborating with them. I'm giving us sort of a platform to jump off of. So, um, thank you for that.
Great. Thank you. Any public comment on that? Not seeing any. We'll move on to the, your cert reports.
Excellent. Um, as you all know, we, uh, we had quite a robust year. Um, I, I was shocked at the amount of events that we did. You know, we just kind of do them and plan for the next one. But when you really see those, um, those numbers and, and what we've done, it's, it's quite, um, impressive with the small staff that we have. So here's a little bit of an annual, uh, summary with some cool pictures. Um, so January, December of 2022, um, we had several events, um, that we, so I, I kind of put them together because we do try to collaborate a lot with our, both our cert programs. Um, it's been. You can't see anything?
The slide up.
Yeah. Oh, that would be helpful if I would actually share it, wouldn't it? Hold on. Sorry about that. Let's try this again. Thank you. There we go. Can we see that now? Hopefully. Yeah. Okay. Beautiful. Thank you so much. Sorry. Uh, let me put it in present mode. All right, there we go. Try this again. So, um, we did, uh, have 40 new teen certs, um, which, uh, you know, a lot of these academies take months to plan. Um, and we did do a lot of, um, extra work on, um, really recruiting people through the school and getting our teen cert clubs up and running. Um, so as you can see on the teen cert side, also on the cert side, we did 11 events, um, reached about 730 residents. Um, I would like to also start to get some good analytics from people that come through. A lot of it, I just look at how much collateral I took, how much I gave out. Um, so we're always looking to approving our events, but, um, 11 events is, you know, quite a robust set of events for, for a small staff. So, um, really want to thank the certs, um, and the teen certs both for, um, coming out. Um, really engaging the public when they're out at these events and, um, pulling in, um, new partners and new members to our, our teams. So we have kind of two categories that we, uh, we do with our events. We've got district led, which is, which is us planning events. Um, we have an event staff, again, a small one, but, um, a robust one. So we did have a total of, if you see there, um, quite a few events throughout the year. Um, and also our district collaboration with our, with the town. We do a lot of events, uh, with the town. Um, those, you know, again, are, um, us coming out, having tables, sometimes helping in the planning process. Um, so we did, uh, you know, have quite a robust, I, I lost, I'd start in wine festival is a great, great. Um, you guys have to come out. Some of the commissioners come by sometimes, um, great event. We do get a lot of, um, teen certs out of that event and certs as well, um, believe it or not. So, um, those are just a little bit of analytics for you to look at and some pictures too. And that is it for my events.
Great. Thank you. Any comments, questions? As you know, the teen cert is always my favorite topic. So just to see 40 over the year, that's just, that's incredible. And, uh, uh, I hope that continues and hope their, their clubs there, then you just sort of build some momentum there at the schools already for you, do the work for you. Thank you. Any public comment on that?
Um, yes, we have a comment from Alan Epstein.
Great. Thank you. Alan?
Thank you. Uh, Victoria, uh, congratulations on all the activities that you do. The enthusiasm is great. When we talk about metrics though, I think this is a case where, um, um, the metrics could be improved. Um, you talked about the, um, youth cert members, but you did not talk about the adult members. How many members do we have? What sort of attrition or addition do we have? How many trainings took place? How many activations took place? All those types of things I think would be valuable. And then most importantly, you know, what's the goal? Um, what are you trying, what are you trying to achieve and how can you measure those metrics against what you're trying to achieve? Thanks so much for all you do.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely move into, that'll go into our strategic planning metrics discussion, I'm sure. Great. Thank you. Um, let's see. Now moving on to our defensible space brush chipping and debris removal program six month report. Uh, just to click Vargas and fire safe council project coordinator valley. Could you please provide this report?
Great. Thank you, commissioners. Um, you have to excuse me. Um, my voice is leaving me. Hold on one sec. You. Okay. So, um, what we're presenting to you tonight is the, um, a six month report, uh, that is, uh, spans from July to December of 2022 for our defensible space brush chipping program. And nothing, I don't know why it keeps jumping. Okay. Um, so we did, uh, present a similar report to you back at the September meeting, which covered the first six months of 2022. And, um, just want to, you know, quickly go over, uh, the program background. It is a services provided to all the residents of the district. Um, we've been providing it since 1998. Um, and we have this, um, what we call the yes, we can, uh, motto. And that is that we want to remove as much hazardous vegetation, uh, from the district as possible. And increase neighborhood and property resiliency from wildfire. Um, and involve residents and management of brush and tree limbs on their property and, um, to do this. So generally we have a, uh, two times per year, there's, there's the six different, uh, areas of the district. And each area is, uh, serviced two times a year. So for example, area one is serviced in both January and July. Um, but in, if you recall, in July, we started the extra out of area services. So that is meaning that say in January, which would generally be area one, there was someone who lived in area three. Who had a large amount of brush to be removed. Um, we decided that that model, yes, we can, we will help you to remove. You can sign up anytime of year. Um, and this has proven very successful for the district. Um, and we've seen the numbers increase, which, uh, we'll get to some of the metrics later. Um, and, uh, come on, here we go. So, um, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Nestor, who is with, um, Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council. And he can sort of describe briefly to some of the, the management, uh, and behind the scenes of the program. Nestor.
Thanks, Cory. Hi, everyone. My name is Nestor. I'm with the fire state council. I'm a project coordinator. And I work alongside with Irene, who's a program manager, and we assist with managing and the operations for the brush chipping program on behalf of the district. So just kind of going over briefly of what we do. So we coordinate. And the help with the registration process with the fire side software. So that's the team that develops. And host the registration site and the iPad app that the crew uses to collect data. We also prepare the request for proposals, the RFPs, and eventually we help with the contractor selection every month. When it comes to being boots on the ground with, with the crew and residents. We communicate with contractors, we review, we finalize those daily work plans and the chipping routes. Every day we meet with the contractor, we're there with them on the field and we stick around with them throughout the day to ensure that the metrics that we need are collected on the iPad. So that includes measurements, photos, and in any other notes that come out, whether you know, we're missing a pile or we had some non-standard items in those piles, then we go ahead and make sure that that's all documented. And then lastly, it's just quality assurance. We want to make sure that everything is chipped. And that the areas are left clean. We don't want to leave all the debris around there. So they just hit it with the, a leaf blower, which is always fun. When it comes to residents, we do our best to just make sure that we take everything in, whether it's questions or comments and we make sure that, that we're answering everything that, that comes in. And we also reach out if there's any piles that are missed. So we make sure that we have any guidance on, on where to find those. Like Corey said, it's a yes, we can program. We want to make sure that all of the hazardous fuel is taken care of at the end of the event. We also review contractor service invoices and billing details. And at the end of the month, we prepare monthly invoice packages, which include not only our invoices, but the contractor invoices as well. And every week we get together with the awesome district chipping team to coordinate, discuss logistics, plan and debrief. Uh, anything that's related to the chipping program. Now moving on to observations within the, the second half of the year of 2022. Uh, 53% of registrants use the extra services feature. Fifty-three percent of registrants use the extra services feature, meaning that they registered when they were outside of the area that was being serviced. So I think this really highlights the fact that when we have people who are engaged and aware of what they need to do to keep their resident safe, and that this program is, like we said before, popular and necessary for the town. We've also seen a five point five percent increase in participation compared to the second half of 2021. When comparing this to the first half of 2022, we see a four percent decrease. However, the average cubic yardage per household has increased from thirty-one cubic yards to forty-five. So this is pretty common among the program, but the volume of brushes is very unpredictable. And we try our best to use previous data to manage how we we help out our contractors and make sure that the program is successful. So since July, when we prepare the RFP, we include a ten percent or a twenty percent overestimate of the registrations to accommodate anybody who is waitlisted prior to the given kickoff. This kind of gives a contractor a better idea of what to expect, and this is all based on metrics from 2021 to 2022. And it also kind of reflects those seasonal patterns that we see around summertime compared to the holidays when people are a little less busy with their tree work and probably doing other, you know, they're on vacation or with their families. Now, the bidding and billing process as of July was also updated. I think we'll be going over that at the end of the slides. But like we said, this is a yes, we can program. It helps us service the residents, and our primary focus is to encourage residents to reduce the hazardous brush on the properties. And I think Cory will be going over the financial breakdown.
Yes, I can go over the financial breakdown. So what you see before you is the various different costs that are behind the program. First, we have the payroll and administrative costs that are paid to Fire Safe Council and Fire Aside, which is the the website hosting. And I think it was a couple of slides back, you saw that big, long list of everything that Fire Safe Council assists us with. The RFP, the working with Fire Safe Council onsite, working with the contractor, talking to the contractor, reviewing the invoices. So it's a lot of administration that is done there. And it counts for about twenty-one percent of the total brush chipping program costs. Then we have our chipping contractor costs, which is sixty-six percent of the total cost. Fire Aside is the program, ends up about three percent of the cost. There is a twelve percent contractor uplift, so Fire Safe Council will pay the contractors. And then our contract with Fire Safe Council accounts for a twelve percent uplift on those costs. And then other costs include the employee mileage and supplies and materials, like there's a little iPad that they carry around with them. And those total other costs, along with uplift, are one percent of the total cost. So our total brush chipping cost, July through December, two hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and twenty-three and fifteen cents. And I'm going to go, sorry. This computer is too sensitive, so forgive me for skipping. And we're doing then a breakdown of month to month. This is pretty self-explanatory. It shows you the number of residents served, total cubic yards chipped, the average cubic yards brush per resident, and the total vendor cost per cubic yard of brush, followed by then the total vendor cost. And as you can see, the volume of brush per household is just very difficult to predict, and it's just a huge variance from month to month. So, excuse me. But the totals that we chipped, and we have this beautiful illustration here of total cubic yards shipped was nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. And that is enough brush, tree limbs, branches from four hundred and forty-five residential properties. It'll cover one football field up to the crossbar of a goalpost, and then there'll be enough left over to fill almost two dump trucks. So in the spirit of Super Bowl season, we chose the football field. And I also do want to point out too that the average sole vendor cost for cubic yard, and again, you can look back at this report from the September meeting, and you'll see all the metrics for the first half of 2022. But did want to point out that total vendor cost per cubic yard has decreased from fifteen dollars and fifty-one cents in the first half of 2022 to twelve dollars and fifty-five cents in the second half. That's great. Yeah. And then, and then Nestor, were you going to go over the revised billing process?
Yeah. So in July, 2022, we revise the bidding and billing process. We work closely with the contractors to establish a process that was more transparent. It's way more streamlined and easy to compare among the vendors, and it's verifiable. We essentially are asking for a cubic yard of brush chip, daily service rate, an estimate of the cost to haul those chips away. And then we are also asking for an on-call service fee for the on-call rate per cubic yard of brush chip and of the properties that they visit. So these are properties that are requested after they receive the final work plan. And so they, you know, something that they're not expecting once they started working. And this has helped us to maintain the current contractors that we had prior to this change, but it's also helped us attract new contractors to submit bids. And we still have people, or not people, but contractors that are interested in bidding in the future. And so we're excited to bring them on board and have them participate in not only the chipping program, but other programs like the evacuation, evacuation route project that was spoken about earlier.
Yeah, it gets to the end of the report. Great, thank you. A lot to see there. Any comments? Questions? I'll say that, first of all, just so you know that Commissioner Taka just dropped off because her Wi-Fi dropped away, so she's, that's where she is. She communicated with me to let me know that's what's going on, so hopefully we'll see her back on. I'm interested to see how this six months goes, because I know I took advantage of the extra out of area cycle because of all the stuff that this winter storms brought down for me. And I get, it's interesting to see that, you know, there's a fifty percent increase of the same, roughly the same residents, but fifty percent more stuff coming in. That certainly tracks my usage, where you realize what a great program it is, like, geez, I'm going to put more stuff on that pile. And I got to say, the vendors have been great for me. The stuff just disappears magically, and it's all cleaned up and just gone. And so I personally have, you know, can say that residents should be taking advantage of this stuff. I've been trying to tell my neighbors, you should just do this. This is great. So I hope more and more people, this really is a wonderful program for getting rid of a lot of volume. Let's see. Okay, next, we were moving.
I guess we should ask if there's any.
Any public comment? Is there?
I don't see any.
No, we're probably coming.
Can I make a comment on this?
Please.
Yeah, I just want, just an overall observation, we've really worked hard on this program. And what's interesting to me is, we started out pretty modest or light with the response to the residents. We tried to run a chipping program and take out the concierge, the premier kind of service. We didn't even think about doing that. It just wasn't working. And so what you see is a lot of effort and energy going in to not only educating the resident, but making sure that there is a person onsite that they can talk with. And Nestor and Irene have done a fabulous job doing that, and that there's all this concierge or yes, we can approach, which is very different than where we started to start with, which was just, oh, we just chip your stuff and we leave. And so there's a cost and a benefit to that, but I think it really is part of our COE program, which is community outreach and education, because every time one of those persons shows up, that's the face of the district that's looking at your resident. That's the resident who you want to feel that their tax dollars is going to a valuable service, and also that they're hardening their property. And they see the linkage between what they do and how much it costs them to bring, to chip all this wood and take the branches down with their landscaper gardener, and then haul it off to the side of the road, and then someone comes by and picks it up for it. So it's really a quick pro quo kind of program. I just think it's really evolved. And when I listen to this and see it, all of the hours that went in from staff who was dedicated to making it work in the kind of way that fit Los Altos Hills, so.
It was, it was a brilliant program that every resident should know about, because really, it's just a habit. Once you decide, you know, for me, it was a question of, okay, where am I going to put this stuff? Once I got the habit of figuring out where I could put it, how I could drag it there. Now, it's just, this is the way for me to get rid of fuel. And I think every resident needs to sort of figure that out. And as how, what a great collaboration is with the service that will take this away from you, once you have either yourself or your landscapers pulling off all that extra fuel that's just falling on the ground or trimming it off. And it's just, I've got nothing but positive things to say about it.
And another thing we had to really grapple with is how to do the bidding program. That did not come easily. And we were finding that we were losing the interest of the vendor. And so how to turn that around and motivate the vendor to want to work with us and to have the right metrics, and also to have the right components to where we could compare from vendor to vendor and do a proper selection. Fire Safe Council, just many, many applause to them for helping us through.
Yeah, I'm really pleased to see how that process has matured and the costs have been gone down. So as variable as it is, and as impossible to predict, it is still under control. So it's really, it's great stuff. Great. Okay, moving on to the next item is the the home ignition zone program, six month report. And will this be, who will be giving this report? I'm sorry? Oh, great. This is Fire Safe Council project manager Armstrong providing this report.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Good evening. I will be presenting the HIZ assessment report for the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. This is for July through December of 2022. Bit slower this half of the year. We did a total of two, we had two assessments requested, and we had two assessments completed through this six month period. And I have a monthly breakdown for you down below here in the gray. Looks like our peak interest was here in the summer warmer months, and then as the holidays rolled in, came a little bit slower. And then so that, a year total for the year 2022, we had a total of seventeen assessments requested, a total of sixteen assessments completed, and one we were not able to get in contact with after it was requested. So that is the assessment report for the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. And thank you for your time.
Any questions, comments? So going back on that slide, it looked like, so it looked like a lot of them got done in the first half of the year. Is that the, and is it just because of the seasons, the weather, or why, why the difference from the first six months to the second six months?
Yeah, I wondered that as well, too. So yes, the first half of the year was quite busy for Los Altos Hills. And the second half of the year, I'm not sure what the driving force was for between the two, but we have the capacity and we're willing to do more. So tell your neighbors, tell your friends.
Yep. Yeah, I hope our further communications will really push that, because we want to use that capacity for all it's worth. Great.
I think what you're seeing here is truly a picture of lack of capacity of staff. We just couldn't do it all. We were really tied up with the I-280 grant CAL OES project with our evacuation routes, with the other kind of metrics that you've seen in front of you. And this is the one that's been the quietest one, because we knew we had the rebate program going, but we didn't have the agreement in place. And it's going to be very difficult to do an HIZ, and then the next week, there's a rebate, and then the person says, hey, how come I didn't get to participate? So, so, and marketing's everything. As Vice President Sherlock knows, once we get revved up and ready to go with HIZs, we'll really get the marketing going, and then I know these numbers will start to really take off on us.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you.
If I might, really quick, Amanda, it's Fire Safe Council Program Director. I'd like to echo what Jay was saying about those topics. I agree with the HIZ rebate program, we're beginning to get that underway, doing some advertising for the HIZ. So we're really, it's a delicate balance, and we're trying to juggle that. So we hope to see some uptick in HIZ registrations and especially with the new DSI tool and the rebate program as we move into piloting those programs. I hope to see better numbers in the coming months.
Amanda, great to see you on board with us. Thank you for joining, and I echo what you're saying, too. We're going to turn our capacity now into HIZ and the rebate program.
Excellent. Thank you. Any comment, questions? Any public comment on that? Seeing none. Hey, great. Next one will be the IHFR Field Projects Annual Summary. Lots of great, about the amount of information and the number of different projects here, people should take note. It's like, where are all these reports coming from? That's showing you all the work that's getting done here, and these summaries just show you that it's just, you can't glean how many hours of work have gone into each of these different projects. And so to see all these things summarized, it really reminds, it should remind everyone of how much work is being done. So thank you. Project Manager Cronin?
Hello again. So this is our annual summary of the evacuation routes and the other projects within hazardous fuel reduction. You already heard about the Arastodaro with, hopefully, my excitement, and I really enjoyed that. These other two projects happened before I came onboard. So first was Altamont, that happened, that started, or I'm sorry, that was completed back in May. So that, too, was an evacuation route hardening. You can see the numbers there, four point four miles, nine point eight eight acres. And if you're familiar with Altamont, you know, there really was a lot more median or shoulder to work with. And so we've covered up, got a lot of acreage out of that, and a reasonable amount of volume as well. Burn preserve, now that's unique. It's not an evacuation route. It's a park that wanted to reduce fuel there. It's probably going to be used, could be used for staging with the fire department. I've had a fire there myself when I was a captain, so it certainly needs to be treated. So miles doesn't really count. There's not a road through there, but certainly acres, seven point eight eight. Volume was unique. The project went actually a couple of weeks, because they use goats to graze the area to reduce the volume and estimating volume per goat. But we were able to come up with a volume of one hundred and fifty-two point four cubic yards of fuel reduced. I already gave you the numbers for Arastodaro. Look at our totals there, seven hundred and one cubic yards. I did a quick math. I think that's about seventeen of those dumpsters. There's that twenty-six point five two acres of area treated. And to restate it, that's that's twenty-six and a half acres that are unlikely to really get going in a big fire. If something were to start there, it's open, it's going to be seen, it's going to be detected, it's going to go slow. The department's going to, fire departments can respond quickly and extinguish it, and it's not going to become a CZU or an SCU fire or a Paradise Fire, whatever. So we're, you know, it's really twenty-six acres of area that's not going to start that next big one and get us into the news. End of report.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments? Any public comments on that? Seeing none. Great, thank you, everybody. We will now move on to item thirteen. That was an item twelve, by the way, once again, was a just a wonderful statement of what our district is up to and the incredible amount of things going on. Item thirteen is the financial and district clerk reports. And let's see, thirteen A is going to be the approval of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four final draft budget. Budget Manager Morali, please provide a report.
Yes, thank you, Cory and Victoria for putting up the slide. Good evening, President Spreen and Vice President Sherlock and members of the commission. It's a pleasure, again, to discuss the final draft of the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. And before I move on, I just want to thank everybody involved. It's, this team collaborates wonderfully together, and I've worked close hand in hand with Cory in the project from the beginning. And of course, Jay's leadership has just been invaluable. I also want to thank the Strategic Plan Subcommittee for laying the foundation, for helping us really build this budget and put dollars to the strategic plan as well. Next slide, please. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to approve the final draft budget with, along with Exhibit B for submission to the County of Santa Clara Office of Budget and Analysis. The draft before you has been revised to include the latest revenue projections from the county, primarily centered around property tax and associated fees. In this latest version, staff has also taken the opportunity to update several items, given the latest emerging information that we've received. These revisions now include interest income. Previously, we've also modified. Previously, we've also modified previously identified capital asset fundings proposals. And we've also made some changes to technology appropriations given emerging needs. As we get into the details, it will be clear, we hope, that these latest changes only fortify the district's finite fiscal position beyond what was previously reported without compromising the district program deliverables. Next slide, please. Tonight's meeting represents the fourth public meeting, presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four budget. These meetings started back in November two thousand twenty two with the very first standing committee meeting, followed by two district commission meetings up through January seventeenth, two thousand twenty three. This commission approved the submission of the initial draft of the budget to the County of Santa Clara on February third, two thousand twenty three. That county submission was unchanged from what the commission was presented at the very last meeting. Tonight's meeting represents the final district meeting before we proceed on to a series of county budget workshops, which will extend through June of two thousand and twenty three. Ultimately, the commission will be asked to adopt the final budget as adopted by the county in June. Next slide, please. This final draft budget remains consistent in its expenditure allocations reported in the prior meeting. Put another way, the level of planned expenditures can be viewed as an indication of the agency's priority of outcomes and deliverables. In that regard, we have not, the changes that you'll see tonight, does that, does not compromise that vision. Including enhanced catch up resource funding requests, the draft budget applies seventy eight percent of all expenditures to essential fire, life and safety services. Fifty six percent are for contract fire and emergency medical services. Nineteen percent for life and safety, community projects and programs, and three percent for district owned capital equipment. And you've heard much tonight about the programs that are being delivered. And that that has even been enhanced in the twenty three, twenty four budget. Next slide, please. In this final draft form, the budget now presents fifteen point eight million dollars in total revenue, nineteen point oh two million in expenditures for a total use of available fund balances of three point two four five million. It is projected that the district will commence the year with a total fund balance of thirty seven point nine million and end the year with a total fund balance of thirty point point, thirty four point seven million. It's important to note that fourteen million dollars of these ending funding fund balances have been committed by the district for various specific purposes, as identified in the prior year budget and also identified in the annual audit and also as reported to the state in the annual state controllers report. Next slide, please. So the essential question on the table tonight is what has changed in arriving at this final draft budget that we are asking the commission to approve for submission to the county? And I thought it's best to answer, to not answer this question incrementally, but rather to present the cumulative change from the initial draft that was presented on November fifteenth to the one before you tonight. As reported on January seventeenth, property tax revenue really is, is the big hitter in terms of changed. And it is, it has again been revised upward by the county's latest, latest estimates for a total change of nine hundred and fifty one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars or six point seven three percent of what was previously reported for a total property tax value of fifteen million ninety four thousand two hundred dollars. These recent projections confirm again, a strong property tax base with a robust current year increase of nearly seven percent and a fiscal twenty three, twenty four projected growth of two point seven five percent. If you add those two numbers together, you see over the next two years, the county is projecting nearly a ten percent growth in property tax. Adding to the prior reported change, interest income in this particular version tonight has been increased substantially by four hundred and twenty five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars or a hundred and sixty four percent to a total of six hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. This was triggered by positive, these positive revisions to revenue. The most recent county's Santa Clara Investment Pool reporting, which we received just this past week or two, and also looking closely at the federal economic projections. We still believe this is a conservative estimate, but we thought this was the time to make this change and put it into the draft budget. The final draft budget expenditures now has been modified to exclude the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of proposed funding for the fire engine water tender that was proposed in the previous version. We have found that production supply chain delays and extended time requirements to implement this resource has prompted us to defer this funding to future years. The Santa Clara Fire Department agrees with this change. We also placed in additional appropriations of a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for facility maintenance, facility maintenance upgrades, which includes the replacement of flooring at the El Monte Station, which you'll hear more about later this evening on the agenda. And that at a cost of forty eight thousand dollars. But we also placed an amount in there that would allow for other unknown facility upgrades that may be needed. Lastly, the technology capital line item has been increased by thirty thousand dollars for video and audio equipment. As we can see this evening, the district has moved back to in person meetings, a welcome return. But as conditions change, we're not sure exactly what type of equipment needs we will have as these in person meetings evolve. Next slide, please. So at the, at the end of the day, this chart reflects how revenues, expenditures, fund balances and use of fund balances have progressed through the last three meetings. The fund balance in this final draft budget again is estimated at thirty four point seven million dollars, which is an increase of two point six billion dollars, considering both revised estimates from the county and the staff indicated revisions as well. Now, next slide. And that ends our presentation on the final draft budget for your comment and consideration. Again, as the commission discusses this, the recommendation on the table this evening is to approve the final draft budget with revenue revisions provided by the county and staff updates for submission to O B A. And shall that be approved, the staff would promptly, as soon as tomorrow, forward that on to the county.
Okay. Thank you very much for that report. Very interesting stuff. Any clarifying questions? Commissioner P C G?
Curiosity question. Do we invest our liquid assets ourselves or does the county invest for us?
The investment income? We, we are, the district funds are placed in the Santa Clara County Pool, co-mingled investment pool. Yeah. And that is a very large billions of dollars of pooled investments, which includes many Santa Clara agencies, and we're part of that pool. So we don't manage the investments directly, but the pool does quite a substantial, quite a significant and comprehensive job of doing that for us.
I suspect, thank you.
Yes.
Anything else? Any other comments? But I'm sorry, the I wish, I wish I were still in the business of myself of creating water tenders because the fact that it's taking so long to buy this kind of equipment is really, really disappointing. But I appreciate that it needed to be reflected properly in our budgeting. So disappointing there. Any other comments? Any public comments? On that item?
I lost my internet connection, so I drove down here because we have unreliable internet and I guess the weather.
Perfect timing.
Please tell me which item we're on. Thank you.
This is the, this was the report of the, of the final draft budget.
Which is thirteen.
Item thirteen A.
Yeah, thanks very much. My only comment with regards to thirteen A relates to the fact, as I mentioned earlier, when we were talking about the strategic plan. I, I just don't see any metrics. And I think when you get around to a budget, you know, you're only talking about one year time period. And with regards to the projects, I think there ought to be specific metrics against which performance can be measured. So thanks very much for the opportunity.
Great. Thank you. I think you for coming in person, by the way, nice to see you here. I will now entertain a motion. Will the commissioner make the motion and the commissioner seconding the motion? Please state their names for the recording. Warren moves.
Warren moves.
Sherlock seconds.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other comment on this item? And let's see, any discussion? Didn't think there would be any public discussion on this motion. Okay. We will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please connect the roll call.
President Spring?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner P C G? Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yes.
And Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to thirteen B, which is reminder to the commission and identified staff to file Form seven hundred and complete mandated training requirements. District Clerk Vargas, do you want to make some comments on that?
Yeah, yeah. So the legislative body, as well as certain staff members are responsible for filing the Form seven hundred, which is the statement of economic interests. Everyone should have received already a reminder email to file that form. I have received two as of tonight. I can send out another reminder email. I know for our new commissioner, I will send instructions on on how to get that. Once you're set up, you just took the oath of office today. So in the next couple of days, we'll be set up for that. Due date is April first for that as well. And then, of course, there's also just a reminder that A B eighteen twenty five and S B thirteen forty three, which are the harassment and discrimination training are required every two years. So just check and make sure that everybody's up to date on that. And there is a portal I can provide where you can take the training.
So if if we are in need of that, those training classes, would you have contacted us?
I will cut, yeah.
Okay, yes.
And that is the end unless there's any questions.
Any comments on those things, those requirements? Okay, thank you. Let's see, I guess there's any public comment on that? Didn't think it would be. Thank you. Move on to item fourteen, approving the purchase and installation of vinyl flooring at the El Monte Fire Station. General Manager Logan, do you want to present the report on that?
Yes, thank you. I'll just briefly go through the memorandum report that's attached. And this represents the collaboration that the district has with us, County Fire. And County Fire did recommend the replacement of the carpeting. It's now at El Monte with wooden flooring. And somewhere around here, I brought in a sample.
Oh, I saw, yeah. I wonder if that.
Oh, wonderful.
Was here.
Yes, if you could just pass that around because it's completely up to someone's discretion as to which sample we choose. But just to give you a brief overview, El Monte Station, there's some highlights here in the memorandum report was built in nineteen ninety six. And that commissioners have expressed interest in upgrading to the facility for not only better better facilities for the fire crews that are there, but also for environmental enhancements. And the fire department and I have been in conversations about that for the last year. We still don't have timing for the remodel nailed down yet because of the fire department's capacity to do so. And our priority as El Monte stations is not that high as to other stations within the county that are in much more dire need of that kind of remodeling. So given that, we are then looking at, well, what can we do to make the residents for the fire, fire crews more accessible and better for them? And the major thing is the flooring. And so that's the part of the discussion where just for the health and safety reasons to enhance that is, you know, we've all had carpeting. We know what happens. We just get rid of it and put in wood flooring. So I've passed that around. It is a nice vinyl tile flooring. And it would go into all the rooms that are now carpeted. I've got those listed out. And the approximate cost is forty eight thousand dollars that the district would pay for the materials. And the materials would cover the tile itself, the installation, the removal of the carpeting, that's in the memo report. And then in exchange, Central Fire would handle all the logistics, dealing with the bidding, dealing with the contractor and all the arrangements that go in. So that was the model we used when the wooden deck needed to be replaced. We bought the materials and Central Fire put in the labor and the administration to, to, to rebuild it. Seems to work out very well. So that would be my recommendation. And they would like to move on it very quickly. These, these bids, as you know, they're good for a certain amount of time and then they're no longer good. Prices are going up, so I would recommend approval for that amount of money, forty eight thousand dollars. And I think it is budgeted. Is that correct?
Twenty three, twenty four, we put that amount in in the budget.
Any comments here from commissioners on this?
We're not selecting color, correct? We're gonna.
You can select color.
Well, I, my recommendation would be a darker color because of our boots are black and they leave scuff marks. And the firefighters would probably be happiest if they were able to choose from the approved product.
So I asked about that and I was told that the firefighters would be just very happy to have that, that tile put in and not to worry about it, but just to make a choice that we thought was best in hand. So I'll lean on the firefighters in the room to select. We've got two of them.
And I would totally leave it to Commissioner McDonald to help finalize that working with. Great. Thank you so much for doing that because I know getting that carpet out of there, I'm sure everyone will be, will appreciate. So and getting something a little more sanitary and cleanable and maintainable. So I'm glad you're able to do that. Any other comments on this?
Yeah. Yeah. So to echo that, my understanding is, is yeah, the firefighters want to get rid of the carpet. They like the spinal flooring, much easier to keep clean. Plus, as they track in material from their boots, this is easier to clean. The other aspect is, is that, you know, the station's over twenty five years old. It's lived in constantly by a team of people, twenty four by seven. This is their home. We have the ability to, you know, keep, maintain it professional and upgrade it where we can. And I, I wholeheartedly support this project and other projects we can do to enhance the fire station because this is, this is where these people live for a good chunk of their, their days. And, and we want to make it, you know, as, you know, functional and safe and attractive as we can for the people that work for us.
And I do express that to the fire chief when I, when I meet with her, which is quarterly, that we're always interested in keeping our firefighters, you know, very content with where they are. So they bid in and we have, you know, very good facilities for them to live in.
Very good.
And we love our firefighters.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, hearing positive comments, I would entertain a motion for this item.
Sherlock moves to approve.
Great. And a second.
Warren seconds.
Do it. Great. Let's see, any more discussion on this for this motion? Any public comment on this motion? I see we have a public comment.
Thank you. I have no objections to installing vinyl. I recognize all the benefits associated with it. But I would just like to remind the commission that the commission signed a contract with Central Fire, section six point two five and six point two eight. Speak to this issue about who is responsible for upgrades and remodels. And it's quite specific that it says that it's Central Fire's responsibility to do it. We pay him five, six, seven million dollars a year. These, these costs are anticipated in, in those amounts. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you. I will, in no more further comments, will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please connect the roll call.
President Spring?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner P C G?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you. Now move on to item fifteen, approving the First Amendment to the Community Education and Risk Reduction Manager Employment Agreement with Denise Gluhwin. Let's see, General Manager Logan, if you would present this item?
Yes, thank you. As you've heard in the past, when compensation comes before the commission, the California Government Code, section five, four, nine, five, three, subsection C three, requires the commissioners to orally, the commission to orally report a summary of the proposed compensation before taking final action to adopt that compensation here by approving the First Amendment to the employment agreement. The proposed compensation is described in the proposed First Amendment to the Community Education and Risk Reduction Manager Employment Agreement included in the materials for this agenda item. The proposed amendment to the Atwill Part Time Employment Agreement includes the following compensation wages. The proposed First Amendment to the agreement sets the pay rate at ninety three dollars per hour. Base compensation shall not exceed one hundred and sixteen thousand zero sixty four dollars on an annual basis without the written approval of the G M and notification to the president of the Board of Commission. The proposed employment agreement does not provide vacation, holiday pay, medical benefits or retirement benefits. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Any clarifying questions? The question? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for this. We'll. CG moves.
McDonald seconds.
Thank you so much. Uh, any, it's open for discussion. Any further discussion from the commission? Seeing none, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spreen?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Pacey?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you very much. Move on to item sixteen, approving the First Amendment to the Budget Manager Employment Agreement with Russell J. Morales. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, by the way. I've heard, I hear it different ways, and that sticks for me. General Manager Logan, please present this item.
Yes, I'll again cite the same Government Code, Section five, four, nine, five, three, subsection C, subsection three, requires the commission to orally report a summary of the proposed compensation before taking final action to adopt that compensation, here by approving the First Amendment to the employment agreement. The proposed compensation is described in the proposed First Amendment to the Budget Manager Employment Agreement included in the materials for this agenda item. The proposed First Amendment to the At-Will Part-Time Employment Agreement extends the term of the agreement to August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and includes the following compensation: wages. The adjustment, the adjusted total compensation to ninety-two thousand, four hundred dollars for the employment term of September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. There's no change in pay rate. The agreement does not provide vacation, holiday pay, medical benefits, or retirement benefits. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Any clarifying questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Again, please state your name for motion or seconding.
Sherlock moves.
Warren seconds.
Great, thank you so much. This is open for discussion. Any more discussion from this? Not seeing any. Is there public comment on this item? I believe there is.
Yes, thank you. First, let me say that this is not a comment about Mr. Morales. I've worked with him. He's an excellent guy. He does a wonderful, he does a wonderful job. But the budget cycle is over, and the budget cycle will not start again for six months. We're basically going to pay Mr. Morales forty-two thousand dollars over that six-month time period. It doesn't seem rational or reasonable to me, when you don't have a budget going on, to have a budget manager and to pay forty-two thousand dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the comments. Um, let's see, there's no further discussion. Also, a discussion that the financial needs of this district take up our entire year. And I've been really pleased working with Morales, as you know, well, as well. And our strategic planning is a constant thing going on right now. We're really trying to make sure we're doing things appropriately with the county, with our, with our partners, and amongst ourselves in a strategic way. And so I've, I've certainly found his input to be really helpful, and I appreciate the oversight he brings. Um, and I know that we are, we are a better district for it. So thank you. Let's see, uh, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spreen?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Pacey?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
The motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you so much. We'll move on. We're moving quickly. Finally, item seventeen, approving the Third Amendment to the District Clerk Employment Agreement with Corinne Vargas.
Uh, yes. Again, Government Code, Section fifty-four, ninety-five, three, subsection C three, requires the commission to orally report a summary of the proposed compensation before taking final action to adopt that compensation. The proposed Third Amendment to the At-Will Part-Time Employment Agreement extending the term of the agreement to August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. There is no adjustment to compensation or pay rate. This agreement does not provide vacation, holiday pay, medical benefits, or retirement benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. CG moves.
Sherlock seconds.
Second, thank you. This is now open for discussion. Any discussion? Any public comments on this? Oh. Seeing none, okay, good. I'm seeing good public comments. The right finger being up, thank you. Okay, let's now vote. District Clerk Vargas, could you please connect a roll call for this?
Yes, President Spreen?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Pacey?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yes.
And Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you. And let me also add to that how, what a joy it's been working with you, in the same way and continuing to, to work on that. So I don't want that to go by. Uh, now move on to item eighteen, commission member reports. Uh, let's see. This is an opportunity for commissioners to provide reports or any future agenda topics. Are there any comments from commissioners for this? We've been pretty much over every topic already and had a chance to mention things. I wouldn't expect much, but now it's certainly an opportunity, if there is. Any public comment on future agenda items? I see one.
I'd just like to, um, ask, since, since the FEMA or Cal-OSHA isn't going to fund that project, and it's an important project that you guys have talked about, and we have forty million dollars sitting in the bank right now. I wonder whether or not, uh, the district should consider just moving ahead with that project, or at some point in time when it becomes evident that we're not going to receive the money or not receiving money timely, that the district consider moving ahead with the project if you believe it is important to do. Thanks.
Appreciate the comment. I'll, I'll mention that, you know, this news is just hot off the press, literally from this week. And so I'm sure that will be the subject of discussion is what do we do from here? It's still on my mind as well. So thank you. Okay, uh, let's see, uh, moving on to fit eighteen B, the next straighter commission meeting. Is a notice that it will be scheduled for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, in-person and hybrid at the same location of the Town Hall Council Chambers. Any additional comments for the commissioners about that date and location? And I appreciate everyone's, uh, and we've, we've, we're still working on the technology, and thank you everyone for, for learning more about how to do this, because it really is still new and fresh. Any public comments on that agenda, that, that scheduled location? Seeing none, uh, we will, before we move on to item nineteen, I want, which is adjournment, I know everyone's waiting for, I want to make one comment, which is that in addition to, we're so pleased to have a, a new Commissioner McDonald as part of this dius. There is one member missing from this dius, who tonight is also his reappointment night as well. Commissioner Tyson could not attend tonight, unfortunately, but he did send his remarks that he is, quote, honored to be able to continue this important work, unquote. And so we, we miss him in spirit and in body. I hope we'll see him next time. And we appreciate that he is starting a new term with us as of tonight. So thank you, George, if you're watching this. I, I'm sure you did watch all the way to the end. And, and here, here you are. Uh, so in that case, item nineteen adjournment, this concludes the February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. This meeting is adjourned at ten o'clock on the nose. If you will, please stop the recording.